Do a roll call then.
No, I'm not doing minutes.
No?
Nope.
That's when we count it. Unfortunately, Mary is sick. Some of this we're gonna want to finish tomorrow. Hopefully she can get here tomorrow. We need her and her computer for some of it. Alright, so we'll go over the tentative 2023 budget. The first page in, let me know if anything you see there you'd like clarified.
I'll talk a little bit for Mary. This is salaries. This is what you guys usually just, you know, I mean, these are, um, these right here that are here. There's nothing but a three percent in it.
From last year.
And highway right now, we're down that low because.
What, where are you?
Second one down for 2022 actual.
We're on page three?
Oh, page, well, on page three or page one?
One, yeah.
One, I don't, I have no idea what's going on with that. That's Mary's.
You're looking at the actual year-to-date for the highway?
Yeah, that's because we're down to get, to uh, employee.
Yeah, and don't forget, I mean, he hasn't expended quite a bit of his budget yet.
Yeah, we got another.
Because uh, you're just starting to even pay there on the fifth and sixth, right? You said?
Yep, Wednesday and Thursday if everything works out alright.
Yeah, but a lot of it is, um, two salaries.
Yep.
We just started on another topic, I mean, we brought that up, I just got, um, somebody else to fill out application up there also.
For the highway?
Yes.
For what?
Uh, MEO, I mean, you say he, he uh, he does have some mechanical skills. He's worked around trucks and stuff like that for a long time, probably like mostly up there, you know, pretty much some of the basics he goes. You know, lift the engine apart, but you don't get into that big overhaul stuff anyways up there.
Not, not, not anymore for quite a few years.
Um, I told him to, I grabbed an application, he's doing the app, as soon as he gets everything back to me, I'll send it to civil service, make sure they okay him, and then I'll have you interview him, and then after the interview, we can send it for his medical stuff. So, he looked, he sounded like he was pretty interested.
Is he right around here?
Um, yeah, he's not in the town, but he's pretty local. I'd lie to you if I told you where he's from, but he's from a, he is from a neighbor in town, because that was one of the questions he asked, if he had to live in a town.
No, no, we had that changed quite a few years ago.
Yep.
He the one that doesn't have the CDL though?
He has, he had a CDL and he let it go because the trucking outfit he was, um, working for closed up, they got done their contract. So, he's in the process of seeing when he can go down to DMV to get his license renewed. I told him, I said, you know how that's gonna go, they're gonna make you take the test again, and the driving test again. He thinks where he's working right now, they might have a, a box truck that's heavy enough to qualify for a CDL. If not, that's gonna, his only hurdle is getting a truck that's heavy enough to take his road test on, you know what I mean?
Can't go in town truck? You used to.
It's up to Mike, I couldn't tell him that, so.
In this day and age, I definitely.
Alright, so I'll let him know that if he can't get a truck, that you'll let him use that, you'd, you'd have to go down with him actually. Because you're gonna have to have a, somebody with a CDL driving it. And he won't have one until after he passes his test. But as soon as he gets his written exam done, he's supposed to let me know and, let me know when they schedule it for Israel.
Well, hey, let's hope, you see?
It sounds quite awesome, he sounds pretty. Was everybody good with one?
Yep.
You want me to go through them, or are you good with it?
Huh?
Is there something you wanna go through on page one? Other than going through them, a lot of them are special bills.
You going through each one of these individually?
Um, just going, covering the page pretty, pretty quick unless you see anything out of the way, but these were all.
One, that's one, yeah.
Yeah.
I just wonder why the general is so much more.
You mean, uh, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand?
Yeah, nine hundred.
Nine hundred seventy-nine thousand one nineteen?
Yeah, it's compared to five seventy, that year-to-date, I understand. How much will that change?
Well, the, the general was, so you're looking at, uh, twenty thousand dollars. Twenty thousand dollars and eighty-seven cents actually, to be exact, to be precise.
Yep.
If you look at, uh, budget as modified for 2022.
Okay.
It says nine hundred fifty-nine thousand thirty-two cents.
Yep.
And then actual, the date is five thousand ninety-nine nineteen.
Uh huh.
And then our projected for this year is twenty thousand in 2023.
Alright.
And then if you look far over from the change for twenty-two, it's twenty thousand dollars and eighty-seven cents.
So just to hit on that point, Kevin.
Yep.
The actual in 2021 was seven hundred and thirty-six thousand eight hundred.
Yep.
And the projected for twenty-three would be nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
Yep, but you're, you've got a budget in between there too.
Right.
You have the 2022 budget.
Which we can't determine as of right now, obviously.
Well, we're not finished a year yet, but yeah.
Of course, of course.
But there, there's a lot of things that are going up right now, I mean, like, what did she tell me, I think a, a box of paper went from twenty-five to fifty dollars a box now? I mean, so, what, if it gets to the point where, when we run those numbers and see where we are in that two percent, we can look at going back to that and seeing if it's necessary. But it's, it's not a lot for a whole year, especially with what's going on right now. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, you did, you did, you did.
Is that the only one on one? I mean, it was a lot more substantial from twenty-one to twenty-two. Alright, uh, if everybody's on page two.
So, as presented right here, this document would be showing an increase of seven point three nine percent. But you had just mentioned that some things have occurred where you don't anticipate it to be that high?
No, so that, I'm not quite sure, I mean, you know, we don't have a crystal ball on this, but we're going with what the increases were from last year to this year.
So if we approve this budget per se, not take anything at all out of it, it's gonna be seven point three nine percent increase?
Yeah, but you gotta look too, because you got two hundred and ten thousand dollars coming in.
I understand.
Nope, that's coming out of the appropriated.
Right.
Yes, I.
So you've gotta add that in to the seven point three nine, so when you go back, actually, your tax increase is from nine fifty-nine of last year to nine seventy-nine of this year, so only twenty thousand.
It is the twenty thousand.
Yep, that two hundred and ten is what we were talking about last meeting, if we put, take that out, that adds to our
Yeah.
percentage, and that's what throws everything off when you look at it.
Realistically.
No, it subtracts to your percentage.
Well, if, yeah.
If we, so if we took more than two hundred and ten thousand out.
That would be even a higher number.
That would.
Be a lower number.
No, it'd be a higher number, because you're putting money in.
It would decrease the tax rate.
Right.
Your, your tax rate.
From seven point three nine downward.
Right.
Right.
That's what I'm striving to do.
Your implied tax rate is at thirty-two, zero point three two three zeros. It's, it's not much of an amount.
I understand.
If you look at what it was before, it's, it's almost a, a no change.
So I mean, that's gonna be adjusted based on what we decide on here tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, clear.
And next, the next.
Right, the, right.
Because we, like I said, to get into nitty-gritty on this, we really need to have the, having the computer.
Sure.
If you know what I'm saying, to get each line. But like I said, if you look at the current and what the implied is.
Yes.
It's, it's, what?
Twenty-three cents, well, point two, three, two, three.
It's two cents, alright?
You're, you're correct, but it's still seven point three nine percent.
I, I, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, the percentage.
That's all, I mean, that's not gonna go away, and that's a number I'd like to see down to about two percent.
Yep, and I'm sure that.
When we get done here tomorrow night, I hope so.
Yeah, well.
That it is lower.
Well, like I say, the only thing you don't wanna do is pare this thing down to low that we can't cover the cost of the eight to nine percent.
Yeah, that certainly is up to this board, you're so right, you're so right.
Because if you put yourself in a box where you can't cover the bills, it's not gonna work out.
Nope.
Page three.
Okay, yep, around three.
What page are you on now, Kevin?
Page three.
Um, on three, I mean, this projected three percent across the board, uh, I mean, I know for the town board, personally speaking, I don't even care if it's zero percent for the town board, I mean, we meet once a month, we have a work session, sometimes once a month, so it's not really that important at this time to get a three percent raise. I know last year we didn't take a raise, what is the difference? I mean, not a big deal if we wouldn't take the raise, what do you think, Mike?
I haven't taken one in two or three years, I don't need to take one.
So you'd go for not raising?
I would.
No, I'll caution just this, okay? Um, the last three years, like you said, you guys haven't taken anything, which is, you know, um, outstanding, but if you do get new board members, they at some point in time are gonna wanna right-size this, probably, I would guess, I don't wanna speak for them, I don't even know who, what that may or may not be, but you don't wanna get it too out of whack with what other towns are. But it's definitely worth mentioning that you guys, um, feel that way every year to try to help the taxpayers out so that they're not paying any more than they have to. I don't have a say on that, I mean, other than what I just told you, that's totally up to you guys.
Okay, now, speaking.
Is that something you wanna take out?
I, I'd say zero percent raise for the town board members.
Eight hundred and twelve dollars, right?
Yep, that's what it'd be for all of you. If, if you took a three percent raise, it would be eight hundred and twelve dollars to the taxpayer. For the whole year. Which would be not even a penny probably on the dollar. To the whole budget.
Comes to four hundred, what, two hundred and three dollars a councilperson?
Yeah. Per thousand.
Divided by twenty-seven.
Well, like I say, it's not, it's, it's, other than being, I'm looking for the right word, you know, um.
What's everybody else doing, suggesting?
Pretty much, most of them are asking, are for three percent, um, I do have some of the other towns. I did check around. These, these are tentative too, so don't get caught up that these are what they're gonna do, but, uh, Town of Flashford, what they do is whatever their, um, contract, negotiated contract rate is, that's what they give everybody else, so. Their union contract, what, their union contract.
Like town.
Like the highway guys, so they ended up, they're going with an tentative of four and a half percent raise for everybody. Um, our highway guys ended up about four and a quarter. Um, Beadman Town is right around five percent, their highway superintendent asked for actually eight percent. Uh, Shaysie is five percent, all others three percent for the highway is five. Danamore didn't have theirs locked in yet, Peru is three percent pretty much across the board. Saranac still didn't have a lock-in for me, but those are some of the towns that we checked with. Doesn't look like anybody's going under three. Just to give you an idea of what other towns are doing.
Well, here's an unpopular topic.
Yeah.
That I'll bring up. Regarding, and I'm gonna talk about a position, not a person, in this. The position of town supervisor last year incurred a twenty-five percent raise, unheard of, but this board passed it, so this year, I think that that three percent, if the town board is gonna say zero percent, I think the position of town supervisor should stay the same for this year, or for the year twenty-three, I'm sorry, the year twenty-three.
Alright, can we, can we take these in, can we take these in order first so we don't get confused on what we have and haven't missed?
Uh, what are we missing?
Well, you skipped over the justices, right?
Oh, I thought we already, okay, go ahead, Kevin.
So, no, I, I wanna know what's going on with this, are we taking out the three percent for the councilmen, is that where everybody's agreeing to?
Did Vern say anything before he left?
He hasn't had the chance to say anything yet. If, uh, somebody wants, you wanna give him a holler and you wanna go back to it tomorrow night, I don't have a problem with that either.
I think that's the best thing to do then.
Contact them, okay. Alright, justices? As well as the clerks, all three percent? Everybody good with that? Okay, now supervisors up. You guys hit that out, maybe you wanna say with that?
I think I've already said it.
Okay, so this is a roughly a seven hundred and twenty dollar raise for my salary. I put in a ton of hours down here. And what, I appreciate you looking out for the tax dollar and for the taxpayer, but seven hundred and twenty dollars, actually the twenty-four, doesn't cover the hours I put in down here, I signed up for the job, I know what I signed up for. I appreciate that they right-size the salary like we did for Cliff a few years back with the dock control officer. And I'm gonna look at another one this year that needs to be a little bit right-sized. Uh, my salary is not so out of whack with most of the towns that are around our town. And I'm gonna say that I would like the three percent raise as a seven hundred and twenty dollars for the year.
Right, but you can't, you can't vote on your own raise.
I can, I can vote on it, but I'm not going to say that, I'm not gonna tell you exactly what I feel, you told me how you feel, I'm letting the people know and the board know that I believe seven hundred and twenty dollars is not a huge raise, not for the, not a time that I'm down here. I do much more than what I have to do, put it that way. There's a few of us that are down here that do, including putting up the deal signs and all the stuff we do down at the, the park and the ice skating rink that I'm down there almost every other night, working on, so, that's my own opinion on it. You guys can decide what you wanna do with my salary.
When do, when do we vote on this, is that something, Wiesel has, Vern has to be checked when, checked on as well?
We should at least give him the courtesy of checking on his position on the board.
Basically, you're doing the budget, you basically do not vote on raised salaries.
I'll just do it.
At an organizational meeting.
Right.
And then, you know, you could say no to some or whatever, but this is for the budget.
Don't over all budget.
Yeah.
Right, and what we're doing here is saying if there's anything that you wanna change before it gets to that.
So that's what we're discussing right now?
Yeah, if there was any changes to any of the budget, um.
And when do we have to make those changes, Mike, so I'm getting that, so, will Vern be here tomorrow? No, right?
No, so we'd have to contact him to see what's going on, but.
Your budget, your tentative budget's gonna be in by the meeting, and then no changes can be made until the public hearing.
Right.
If, if any.
Around a normal year, a three percent raise is in a ton.
I'm just saying, is it, do we need to check with Vern? It's not gonna make any difference, right? Or is it?
Well, it depends on what he wants to do, because Reggie was saying if the board doesn't take the three percent, then the supervisor should not take a three percent.
Well, I don't, yeah, I go, understand that board position, because it directly affects him, yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, the other stuff, I'm all for, I'm all for letting him.
No, I'm just talking about, you know, his position as board, whether he wants to.
Right.
Majority rules, uh, in the organizational meeting.
Does anybody else feel that I should not take a three percent raise?
I understand what Reggie's saying, you know, it's the same, like, sure, the reason we give that raise is because of the reasons you just stated. And I think that you do an outstanding job and you put a ton of hours in, uh, but I understand exactly what he's saying.
Any other thing that you're gonna look at is if you, like I just, like I said, let you guys know, is that when these things don't go up a little bit at a time, as they should each year, everybody gets raises every year, I don't care where you work, and the salaries this year, in the end of last year, have run up tremendously.
Yeah, but Kevin, you're mixing it up, my, that wasn't my point, my point is this, last year, you took twenty-five percent. Okay, we're in another year, so you could slack off this year and say to the people, zero percent is fine for this year, for the year twenty-three. I mean, my God, does seven hundred and twenty dollars mean that much to you of the taxpayers' money?
No, it doesn't, Reggie, it doesn't mean that much to me, but.
I mean, you can voice your opinion all night about this, you're talking about yourself.
Yeah.
It's a little bit inappropriate.
What do you mean it's inappropriate?
You've already made your statement, so do we have to dwell on it again?
You're dwelling on it, and now you're, you're trying to get me to argue with you, if you don't wanna listen to what I get to say, then you don't have to listen. But what I'm telling you is, the reason we ended up in this bind is because that salary didn't get changed for a number of years. And what happened was they caught it up in one year, so you can play that, that numbers game, but that salary is in alignment with most of the towns around here, it is not exorbitant to any, any amount. And you can, you can let it go for another five years and they'll run right into the same issue.
It's just that you could join in and help us get rid of the seven point three nine percent.
To get rid of.
I'll tell you what.
Seven hundred and twenty dollars.
That seven hundred and twenty dollars, that does matter, that does matter, it does mean something.
Sure it does.
Everything adds up.
Yeah, everything adds up, I agree with you, but you're not doing my job, you have no idea what it entails. And all I'm telling you is you can, you can make this into, you know, uh, make me the bad guy, like you're trying to do, but that's fine.
No, I'm not trying to do that.
I'm just telling you what everybody else is doing, and that's what, there is nobody taking less than three percent raise at here. And, and the taxpayer, I'm pretty sure, wouldn't wanna see their raise for their salary less than three percent when the economy's, you know, about eight percent right now.
Right, but I doubt if any of them got a twenty-five percent raise last year, I doubt it.
Keep throwing that out there, but that, that's not my fault that, uh, the salary was so low to start with, that's what I'm telling you. And you're doing the same thing with your councilman job, you're, you're making the salary, keeping the salary the same for the last, what, five years? And it's gonna right-size sooner or later. Where are, I, the other didn't change, it'll be the next one on there. Anything else on this page? The assessor, uh, have him follow your suit and have him drop down three percent?
You.
He didn't ask for three percent, he doesn't want one.
Doesn't want one, but the budget, the town clerk?
Uh, getting back, getting, oh, excuse me, Kevin, getting back to the assessor, that is, that line is rather confusing, so, so Donna, are you saying that he asked for zero percent?
He did not want a three percent raise.
Oh, okay, thank you, it's.
He's the same, thirty-three thousand one ten.
So he got his three percent last year and he's satisfied with it?
I don't think he took one last year either.
Oh, he didn't?
No.
Well, in twenty-one, he was making thirty-two thousand one hundred and fifty.
So he took it.
And then?
Twenty-twenty-two, he went thirty-three one ten.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see that. He didn't ask for one last year, but you guys gave him one, I remember that. Remember a lot, but I remember that. What you guys gotta remember is there's a little black book right there, and Mary puts all the figures in that everybody's put in that, she, you know, the worksheets. So she does not call somebody in, or Kevin doesn't call somebody in and say, uh, well, why are you putting this? This is exactly what everybody's asked for. And then it's up to you guys to decipher it.
Nothing else on page three? Page four. Elections, I can tell you, they're gonna go up. I can check with, uh, the county board of elections and see what they project, but just talking to Dave, I know, he said it's gonna go up.
Yeah, for, I mean, for sure, because we've got a primary in twenty-three, so, for sure, it will. Yeah, for, I mean, for sure, because we've got a primary in twenty-three, so, for sure, it will. So Kevin, should, should we allocate a little more money?
What's a primary looking at?
No, I mean, twenty-twenty-three, we may have a primary in the town.
Well, I thought you said you knew you had one. I thought you said you knew you had one for sure. That's why I was asking what the primary was gonna be.
So should we allocate a little more money in there?
Well, what I would do is probably, what we should do is check with, uh, the BOE and see. And I could check with another couple towns too, to see. Cause I just know that, looking at this, this is the same as what we appropriated for last year. And that may be something to look at tomorrow.
You wanna try to get Dave on the phone now, or? You wanna try to get Dave on the phone now, or you wanna just keep running through?
Nah, we'll check one tomorrow. Darn it, we gotta be here anyway.
Record management, everything done with that now, Donna?
For now, it is, yes.
Buildings, like I said, um, we're still looking to hire somebody for that.
So, how come it goes up seven percent? We don't have anybody, you projecting that?
No, that's, that's. Go ahead.
That's the town hall, um, C E.
Contractual expense, everything that probably, that probably covers your papers and all your, yeah, all your supplies. And she raised it because like Kevin said, bring the paper from twenty-five dollars to fifty.
Right. Yeah, that was.
Actually, it just went up two thousand dollars.
Then the next one, uh, you'll see the increase on, uh, where it says fifty percent, data processing, contractual units. That's, that's six thousand dollars for. For the security.
Which we have to have.
Non-funded mandate.
Everybody go over the rest of it, dog control offs or safety?
Unallocated insurance. You don't know?
Along those same lines that powered the unallocated insurance, I had a question regarding that. That goes up seven thousand, twelve point seven percent. Specifically, what does that cover, that term, unallocated insurance? Maybe Mary would have to be here probably to answer that.
Yeah.
And.
I know, uh, some of my insurances just went up.
Yeah.
Including my home.
But a, a seven thousand dollar increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, they'll recoup.
And my other question, and Donna, maybe you could answer this one, regarding dog control. I spoke to Mr. Christian last night about the budget. And this term, dog numerator, it's showing here, we spent thirty-eight hundred dollars this year. And Mr. Christian told me that he knew nothing about enumeration of dogs.
The contract for Elmore's SPCA.
Which one? Elmore?
Elmore.
Oh, they, they do it for us. They do it for this town.
No, they don't do enumeration. That's what she's got it under for the contract for the Elmore's SPCA, the yearly contract.
So that thirty-eight hundred should maybe be the next line down, Donna, do you think, or?
No, it's always been, I don't, I, I don't know why it's in that line, but that's what it is, is the contract.
Okay, okay, thank you. And the last one on this page, we discussed this a little bit in terms of, in terms of code, well, in terms of code enforcement, in terms of code enforcement and safety inspections. Many years ago, they got separated in the budget. And we can see them right here tonight where that position is gonna be paying over thirty-six thousand dollars. And comparatively with other towns, that's nearly the highest one in the whole county. For that position, for those two jobs. And further, I mean, I know, I talked to him a little bit, actually, I talked to him today. He's on vacation right now. But he did answer his phone, so that was good. And, uh, he's in this office four hours a week. And I just think that rate of thirty-six thousand, based on the limited number of building permits we have here, I think there might be two or three new homes going up. The rest of the building permits are certainly, I've looked at the reports and they're not substantial by any way, shape or form. But I think that is a position that should be considered to be cut back in salary somewhat. That is an unbelievable salary that we're paying for that. And what do you think?
I feel the same way.
I actually had called him to come in tonight. But like I said, he said he was on vacation, so, so forth. Everybody deserves vacation, for sure.
Oh, if it follows with the assessor and make it a zero percent, but do the same thing with the dog control too.
Now, are you, are you based, Howard, are you basing that because the dog control got a substantial increase a couple of years ago? Is that, would that be your actual, part of your rationale for that?
Part of it, but if we're gonna start cutting other people back, we kinda gotta be even, you know, just.
Usually, we're talking about costs, uh, the cost of living.
Yeah.
And usually those raises are standard down the board. Whether or not they, they want them or not, could be a contention. But you're gonna have to rethink the way we do budgeting here, and most employers do budgeting. If we're gonna not do a cost of living increase across the board, but we're gonna do it by individual. I mean, each individual, when they submit, like Donna was saying, does put in whatever their wish list is. Like I said, usually cost of living, unless you're right, unless you are right sizing the salary, which we've done the facts. We did it with myself, we did it with the dog control ops. As a matter of fact, there's, like I told you, there's gonna be one that I'm gonna bring up tonight that's just not in the realm of what the employee does, from what I see. And the salary's way low compared, particularly speaking to what other ones are. But he takes on more than what he, he should. It's, it's no different than, it's no different than what I ask out of Barb or any of these people down here, Donna. Uh, they work on stuff for me all the time, because we are a small town. So everybody has to chip in and do their job. And some of the times, when I ask Barb to do something, it's way beyond the scope of her title. But she still gets the information for me, does the research, and gets me back the information I need to bring to the board. Anyways. So I guess we gotta look at.
You know, parallel to that, when Mr. Snyder started in.
Yeah.
His predecessor was making seventy-four thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Mr. Snyder, with how many years of service, ended up going down to fifty-nine thousand. So you see, these things do happen, but yet, if we're talking about code enforcement, nobody wants to do that.
Well, we also, you had a new employee step into the highway superintendent's position where you have an ongoing employee with.
Multiple years.
Fifteen years, ten years, twelve years, service? Granted, Mr. Snyder was here, I agree, he's been here for a long time, but he was paid for that previous position. Then he elected to go from that position to a different one, and that's when the decision was made that.
But, on the other hand, not to bring this back up again, but he did lose all of his benefits. Basically, his vacation time was gone. So when he did accept this position, he did take a little bit of a personal loss, on the other hand. Did, you know, like you say, he did it for the sake of the town, to save the town a little bit of money. But I've talked to other highway superintendents that come in. They, you know, when they, when they went from an employee to, you know, to a highway elected official or whatever, of course, the stipulation was already in for me to get paid my accumulated sick time, which was a blessing, cause that was never a fact. The only thing we missed years ago was also giving his vacation time. Which is very, very degrading to me. It hurts me a lot. I earned all that. And I, I just thought that, you know, the town board would say, hey, you know, it's only five thousand dollars. How much vacation time did you lose? It was about six weeks.
That's why I kept on employing you to take that vacation time, and I know you said you couldn't take the time off, you didn't feel like you could.
I've been, I've been going on since June of twenty-twenty. It's not that, it's not that I want, I'm afraid I'm gonna miss a trick up there. But it's like, man, it's, it's massive.
But, yeah.
It's massive.
And, and I don't think Reggie recalls, but he was one of the ones that was complaining about the seventy-four thousand dollars.
Well, that's fine.
That we were paying.
That was back many years ago. I thought that salary was way high. That's right, you're right, Kevin.
That's why we looked at it and.
You're right.
I heard that one, I was just in every place I went in town.
At that time, in those years, that salary was way out of line.
But it was.
I don't know how it got that high.
Well, cause it was past practice, it was practice, three percent every year, no questions. They never went through budgets like this, no line for line.
But when John, when the, a former highway superintendent stepped into his elected position, he lost a lot too. He lost a lot.
Yeah, 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 there's gains and there's losses, everything that you know.
Do I think it was fair? I'm not gonna put.
But again, we're not even to this salary yet. We're, we're trying to get through these, so.
No, he was, you were more or less, Mr. Factor was more or less talking about, you know, you, you cut me, and then you raise somebody else the following year to him. You know, and then, I went the first year with no raise. And then it was three percent, which is fine, but, I mean, hey, I'm trying to do my best, I'm trying to make everybody happy. But it just, it just feels, you know, a little degrading, you know?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry you feel that way, I'll tell you that, cause there is nothing that, on my men's side, that we did meaningfully degrade you.
I didn't know at the time.
We, we put out there what the new salary was going to be.
I didn't know at first. I was well in the process.
But you knew before you took the job.
Yeah, but I knew before I took the job.
Yeah, cause we, we put it out.
Just like, you know, Mr. Randall said, he knew before he took it. He found out it was more involving, so he asked for the twenty-five percent plus. And I was trying to ask for something equal. And it's, it's like, no. Then you sort of started in the middle of the year, didn't you? Yeah. So. Yeah.
No, he finished out a year, yeah.
Yeah.
So. But we couldn't do much about when he started out, other than he knew what the, the salary was when he took it. I agree. Just like I did.
Yeah.
So what are we gonna do? Are we gonna do across the, the board with the COLA, or are we gonna pick and choose each one of these jobs and go down through?
Well, you got somebody you wanna give more to, right?
I personally think there's a position here, maybe even a couple of them. It's, it's very, one of them is very minimal money.
What if we're gonna increase some? Why, if I, we're saying to open decrease some, if you're not gonna go through the brush anymore?
We can. But that, like I said, that, you know, when you start messing with cost of living raises for some and not for others, is one thing whether they don't wanna. It's another thing whether or not you say the cost of living is, is X amount for one person, but it's not the same for the other. I'm just trying to stay as fair as I can with.
I understand that, but when you got somebody making thirty-four thousand versus someone who's making ten thousand, there's a big difference in a cost of living rate.
Just like seventy-four thousand.
Right, so three percent of sixty thousand is a lot more than is than us for six thousand.
Right, right.
So it's not a big deal for us to give it up. But when you have three percent of thirty-four thousand or sixty thousand or whatever, that's, there's, it's not a three percent. It, it should be dollars and cents. Look at it, it's dollars and cents, three percent. That depends on the number that you're referring to, and the amount of raise that you're actually giving.
No doubt, it's that same way with every occupation out there.
I agree.
Depends on what their salary is, what their cost of living, how much that percent is.
Three percent, I don't know if that's the correct way to do it. I don't know if there is a better way, but I'm just saying three percent. You're talking about going across the board, it affects the number usually by what the number is to begin with. Three percent of nothing, it's still nothing, right? So. That's my thought. I'll go find some question if you have one.
Well. Well, again, it's up, the purse string is owned by the, the board. So if they wanna do away with.
So do we put pressure on?
Three percent for everybody. I, I definitely wouldn't take it at that point. We're gonna hold everybody down to not taking a three percent raise.
You wouldn't take it, would you?
I said I wouldn't take it either if we're gonna cut everybody's three percent off.
I didn't say for everybody's off, I just said. Yeah, but how can you pick and choose?
That's what I'm saying. It's hard to pick and choose.
Here I am agreeing with Kevin. It's good. But it's true though, Kevin, you're right. I mean, you pick and choose one, it's three percent. If they make thirty-five thousand, you get three percent of thirty-five thousand. Somebody like us, six thousand, you're right, it doesn't amount to much, a couple hundred bucks.
It's just, it's just a hard game to, to get into, because then you're interjecting not what we're looking at for the economy and what COLA should be, a cost of living should be. We're now, other than right sizing our salary, okay? Either, either direction, either direction, okay, which we did, we proved, we did that. But we didn't, we didn't change what the, the COLA was. I mean, Reggie interjected that of the twenty-five percent given to me one year. It wasn't, it was, the salary was put on board with what the most of the towns were around. It, it, it equals that, don't get me wrong. It, it, it equals that, don't get me wrong, I, I'm not saying it didn't, but it wasn't given as a cost of living raise.
So this board has done both ways, this board has given you twenty-five percent, which I voted against. And this board has stripped him of way more than twenty-five percent.
Not him, the position.
The possession, I'm sorry, you're right, possession, excuse me, Mike.
At seventy-four thousand dollars a year, we're pretty much close to what the town of Plasver was paying there. And, we're a class eight town. I, I take nothing away from Mike, I worked well with him for the last couple of years. And I know he works hard too up there, um, it was, again, not giving him extra COLA or not giving him COLA or cost of living raises, it was deciding what the salary should be as a new employee for that.
I would believe her performance raises, raises. I mean, if you give everybody a raise, then there's an incentive.
And I, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't think, I don't wanna speak for the man, because he's not here. I don't think that if he doesn't get a three percent raise, that it's gonna kill him. But I just don't like getting into, we're gonna pick, because if somebody gets mad at Donna, okay, now we're not gonna give her a three percent raise, right? Or if somebody gets mad at Barb, then we're not gonna give her a three percent raise.
It's not one person, it's a group of people to vote on.
Three percent, if you're calling it a cost of living raise, you can't pick and choose what you're gonna give it to. It's gotta go across the board, otherwise you're gonna have some legal ramifications on it.
Isn't that the way it's always been for forty years?
What, for, for three percent?
Across the board.
I, I mean, it's a cost of living raise, it's not a raise. You can't say your, your expenses are less, so you're not getting a three percent raise.
Because he makes more, that he's not deserving of whatever that three percent.
Well, wouldn't the solution be, instead of, let's take percent and forget it. Let's go across the board with a dollar figure, a dollar figure for raise, instead of a percentage raise, we can do that.
Take some research.
And that's your point, three percent, the sixty thousand's a lot different, you're right.
And there's, if you gave, to give, say Barb, if I remember right from this, it's about two hundred and fifty bucks extra to give her a five percent, right?
Two fourteen.
Two hundred and fourteen bucks.
Well, that's for two of them. But her salary is low to begin with.
That's what I'm saying, if we gave, you know, a, a two hundred dollar raise to Mike this year, he's gonna be wild.
But if you give a three percent on a sixty thousand dollar job, that's why eighteen hundred?
That's what I'm saying, it depends on.
How much they make.
Exactly, and what they're doing, I mean, the, the salaries were, were set based out, based upon kind of the job descriptions and what they're doing for hours.
Okay, let me ask a question.
You know, it's, um.
The original salary, not the cost of living, not the three percent, or the five percent, or whatever you're asking for.
It can be proven, you know, like the actual, like Mr. Factor was said for years, you know, how many does this department put in? To justify the salary, how many does that department, and to justify that salary, hours, you know? It's.
It's kinda hard to determine the hours.
I understand.
You're the only person who keeps track of hours.
And in the hours that I keep track of, believe me, I've got a lot more than that.
He's not the only one, Mary's responsible and I am responsible also.
And I have office hours, and then I have to post it.
So he's not the only one.
Yeah, so, you know what I mean, it's not.
Excuse me, Donna.
Not being.
No, it's, I'm just telling you that.
The office hours.
Hours are posted, if I'm not here, there's a reason.
Kevin, can I ask a question about that?
What's that?
If everybody across the board, everybody employee got in the town, got their three percent raises, right? Do you know in dollars how much that comes to?
You know what, I was just gonna do that, and I didn't know if the board wanted to take that much time to see what it all added up to. But three percent overall is not a huge chunk of money, and I'm gonna, I just went, I just took the time, actually, to, to go over what all the other towns were doing. The lowest anybody was giving for a cost of living was three percent, some of them were higher. But the lowest was three percent, and I don't think that there's an individual here that would say that it costs more to live this year than it did last.
Wow.
You know what I mean?
But, I mean, all in all, everybody got their three percent, would it raise it like ten thousand, fifteen thousand dollars?
I was gonna do that, I, we were on the same line track, because I, I was like, how much is this really, are we talking about? It, and it's not totally a ton of money.
Yeah, it'd take a little while to calculate this up.
But it's, it, you're talking not a lot of money, I don't, I guarantee that those would not even put us into that, the two percent. Because let's be honest, that's what we've been given for raises for the last how many years, is three percent raises.
And we didn't get one in two years ago.
I asked for that during that year, because that was COVID, and everybody was hurting, and I, I I did, I did, I said, I don't think anybody should do it, and we took a zero, 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 you never, you never get a zero back. Because every time you get a raise on top of that zero, it was still a zero.
See, that was COVID.
It doesn't give a lump sum.
That was the COVID time, like you said, but these people that were getting unemployment at four hundred bucks a week. They were getting an extra six hundred.
That was the.
Every, every week.
I agree.
A thousand dollars for unemployment a week, that's pretty massive.
But it comes down to Donna's point, this isn't a performance-based thing, it's cost of living. And the cost of living is pretty universal to everybody.
Oh, it was nice when she had the total, right? None of this is, is way out of whack.
Let's just move on, Kevin. Yeah, it's a cost of living.
I have no problem with somebody that doesn't want a cost of living, I have no problem with it, and it's the word I was looking for earlier was admirable, it's admirable for somebody to do that, so I finally come up with that word, but.
Not including the highway supervisors' increase, we are looking at a grand total of eight thousand ninety-six dollars.
Their overall.
Overall for across the board, everybody in this building.
Eight thousand?
Eight thousand ninety-six.
I don't have to finish there, yes, I got what's going. I mean, I don't wanna get into picking and choosing myself. Who's gonna get a three percent raise and who's not gonna get a three percent raise for a cost of living.
Next, let me handle it differently.
I think so too, I think so too. And, and I would, I would be more apt to say to those individuals as a town supervisor, you know, if we're looking to give you a three percent raise, do you want it? You know, and let that individual make their own decision on whether or not they want it or not, just like you guys.
Howard, did you figure out how that would affect that seven point three nine percent?
No, I didn't.
It's probably in there.
Right, but you'd have to subtract the eight thousand from, so you'd be taxing, let's see here. Now, I don't even wanna try to do that, because Mary said you gotta put it in a certain way.
You put it in a computer, and then she does it, and it pops it up, it's, it's not easy. It, there, there's a term, even at the comptroller's office, to stay under the two percent, there's three figures that go into that. And we looked at, like I said, I, I looked at it last year, just by giving, Mike ended up fucking on him, because he needed the equipment up there. We gave him an extra fifty thousand dollars in his large equipment fund, and it totally screwed our budget to stay under the two percent. That was fifty thousand, it did, it almost made it, you know what I mean? But I still ended up reducing the general fund tax to make up the difference for the highway tax. Because it was, right up to last year, and my bad, I'm still learning. Um, I, I didn't realize that even if we took it out of the unallocated fund reserve and transferred it into the budget, even though the taxpayer wasn't going to see an increase, it still put us over the two percent. Those, those numbers are for your budget, it doesn't matter where you're getting the money from, whether it's, you know, franchising fees or some out of the, you know, the landfill, or some out of the unallocated fund reserve, which we have a lot, which they did down here for years. Which got us into another whole debacle, because they, they used it right down until it was almost gone. Matter of fact, they used the extra they had in the highway fund until it was gone, and then you're seeing a eight hundred percent markup in one year on your highway, which is one, one thing I've been cautioning about since I took over, is making sure that our tax rate doesn't go higher than it needs to be, but maintains our budget without going into our unallocated fund reserve. If you, any of the classes you take from the New York State Comptroller's Office will tell you, you've never based your budget. You, you should never base your budget on money that you don't know you have, or will continue to have. They always base it, they love to see you base it solely on your, your, your franchising and your revenues that you're taking in. The revenues would naturally be the tax to your constituents, because that, that is a solid, all the time. It may go up a little bit each, in every year, up or down, but at least you know, whatever you put in for your taxes, you're gonna get for revenue to run the town, period. Or we start looking at decreasing services for the town, you know what I mean, that's one way that you can do that. But over the last three years, we've gone on three years now, we've kept the tax rate second to lowest in the county, we're the fifth largest town in the county. And we've increased the unallocated fund reserve to the point now where we can start looking at doing some capital improvement projects for the citizens that live in this town, do something back for them.
Kevin, based on us going over the budget. I think it would be nice if we had the ARPA report in terms of, so we know, on, in this budget, how much money out of the five hundred and twenty, or five hundred and forty thousand? Five twenty, wasn't it?
So, five twenty.
The five hundred and twenty thousand, at this point, we have until the end of twenty-four to actually spend that. Where I'm wondering.
Not in the budget though, yeah.
Right, I'm wondering, as of right now. How much have we actually spent, and for what purpose have we spent money from ARPA? And if Mary was there, she could tell me.
Well, the first money that we spent out of it was actually what you voted no for the other night for Rixon app. Voted no to do the engineering.
Okay, I don't even wanna get into that.
I, I, I know, I'm just saying, I'm just telling you, you asked a question. That is the very first money that we spent out of the.
And of course, Macy Lane is pending, as we know.
Macy Lane is, all the surveying is done, we're just waiting for the engineering. It then has to go through, uh, Ryan Davies on, click on Health Department for approval. And then we can start doing what you're talking about.
The bidding process.
The bidding is one little chess move, there's fifty chess moves I'm working on. And, and you're right, we have till twenty twenty-four to finish that up. So that means we need to get all those projects solidified this year, so that we can complete them over the next two years, so.
Mr. Donna, I did some figuring, and if I've taken the right numbers, which I think I have, for the amount to be raised by taxes, the difference would be zero point eight six percent, so that would drop you down to seven point three oh compared to seven point three nine right now.
Thank you.
That's what I'm saying, they're, they're, they're fractions, fractions.
Where we're getting nailed is we're getting nailed on fire departments. Ambulances.
And, and those we don't have control.
We have no control.
They are, they are, but if you want, you wanna look at what their budgets are going up. You have a copy of it, look in the back and see what they're all doing. But everything goes up, I can tell you, the Marshall Fire Department was running on, uh, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, you know, ten years ago. You know, and they're, they're, they get monies from the town of Plasver and the town of Sky Falls, they run everybody. They're all going up, South Plasver, I guarantee six hundred and something thousand, they're, they're all up there. And, equipment's more, you know, you're looking at, to outfit a firefighter, about eleven thousand dollars worth of equipment.
Well, I'm not complaining about them though.
No, I'm just.
No, but they go.
I just myself what kind of a service they can provide.
But, and, and at the same time, right now, we gotta be careful, because it looks to me like the Morsel and the South Plasver have not put in for their, uh, increases for this year yet.
No, we haven't got their budgets.
Morsville.
Fire Department and South Plasver Fire Department.
I was gonna say, Morsville EMS, I signed a three-year contract, that's how we.
No, it's not, it's showing the same as last year, it was not increased.
Same as, uh, same as CDPH, we signed a three-year agreement, so we, we wouldn't have that problem going into the budgets.
We, we did get the budget, must be that it was Thursday, Thursday, she was out on Thursday as well.
But those are gonna go up.
Oh, yeah.
But we don't control special districts, they, they have their own commissioners that do their, their budgets.
What's the zoning clerk position? That was the question I had.
Zoning clerk, okay, so that is, uh, what's her name?
Doesn't matter, you don't.
Okay, that's right, okay, so, it's dependent upon, uh, yeah, you're right, thank you, Donna, but, um, uh, depends on how many meetings they have, so that goes up and down depending on how many ZDA boards that they have. And whether or not they have one a month, or several a month, they could go up, or if they don't have one, one month, they could go down, because she gets.
I wanna say a hundred and ten dollars a meeting.
A meeting?
All right, so on page five, then the zoning PS is for the officer. The zoning clerk is for the person taking the notes during the zoning meetings.
The zoning PS is the other half of.
Right, but that's a, yeah, and then the zoning CE is what we have in there for training and everything.
Yes, and what he uses.
Contractual, you mean?
I mean, it kind of sounds high, because how many meetings, I mean, how many appeals in twenty-two is the zoning board at, does anyone know?
Well, they have.
Two or three?
No, they have a few more than that, because we had a few more issues this year.
About eight, because the, so far, in actuals, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, divided by a hundred and ten, so about eight meetings. Maybe seven meetings.
There was a couple.
A, a, a flat rate every time, you know, they both.
Maybe, maybe they need also just to, not for an appeal, but to do other business, no? It's always an appeal that would target.
In the organizational meter.
In organizational, yes, but other than that, I mean, if you're looking at it, it's two hundred and twenty-seven bucks.
It's got a five hundred last year, five hundred this year.
Right, because they've been hearing more, I mean, I don't wanna give the.
Need a number though, you know?
I don't, well, because she's trying to budget to make sure she's not, we're not short in there.
I'm fine, I just.
Yeah, no, I'm just explaining, that's what she's trying to do, is again, have that crystal ball and say, okay, we're gonna, if this is what we've been running into over the last year, we're probably gonna run into that again next year. It may, may be a, a, a dead year, so to speak, where there isn't as many appeals going in.
So I assume the attorney would fall under the zoning contractual expense? The attorney for the zoning board? With that.
Sure, that, I, I would have to think so, because it's thirty-five hundred's budgeted.
It all depends on what line she's put it on, and that's why she's so crucial to have here during these, because one line changes a whole bunch.
CE contractual expense money? Contractual expense money? And where do you see the attorney for that? Uh, it doesn't say attorney, but we.
Contractual.
Probably would be in that category, I.
Okay, then back on page three. Back on page three, Reggie, if you look the, uh, second block up, we got attorney services, attorney contract expense, and.
Attorney PS.
Personal services.
Yeah.
I believe that's the contract for our town attorney.
Yeah, oh, and that's what I believe it to be also.
Do other town budgets ever have that, where they would have attorney zoning board? A specific identification number for that?
Oh, that would be under the state comptrollers. And that's where Mary comes in, what numbers you put these under. What the comptrollers numbers, 'cause they're, they're, you can move lines around, we do that. Even during meetings, we move money out of, from one line to another. But yeah, she is familiar with the comptrollers, and then when we get audited at the end of the year, auditor, make sure that we did everything correctly. All right, that we're gonna go to the top of, uh, five and work our way down, or where are we going here?
We did five, didn't we?
No.
No, no, we're, we, we went all the way to the bottom with the planning. Okay, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the year, extra.
So if I'm not mistaken, it looks like the first item on there is a ten percent increase.
Yep. Highway superintendent. So that's above, uh.
Well, like you said, you got some people that don't want three percent, and you need some other people just wanna get paid for what they're doing.
You'll put in for ten percent, right?
Yeah, that's why it's here. That's where these come from. I don't put these in, the department head does that, and then it's up to us to go where they want. Other than if you see a three percent, the three percent is what? I thought, should be alright. Whether they want it or not, that's up to them, but it's pretty standard cost eleven, and I'm gonna guess. Just like with the contract for the highway guys up there, they ended up with four point five, uh, four and a quarter percent this year. As most cost elevens are going up, you're looking at a, you're looking at the, the. The standard base. New York, New York State, uh, minimum wage going to thirteen fifty an hour. This year.
I thought it was fifteen or something.
They're trying to get it to fifteen.
Going fourteen twenty.
Yeah, excuse me, you're right, it's thirteen twenty, it's going to fourteen twenty. Thank you, Sam, for correcting me. But that will keep them in alignment to get it to fifteen by next year, and that's where they want. And I'm gonna be honest with you, I've tried to hire, and Mike has tried to hire two guys for the garage up there. And I tried to hire three employees down here all year long. And nobody wants to work for ten, eleven bucks an hour. Not when they can go to a fast food restaurant and work for sixteen and seventeen bucks an hour. And some of them even got sign-on bonuses. So that's what we're against, that's what we're up against.
And I think a lot of it too is, not that I'm bragging or anything, but I mean, when I give the interviews, it's like. If you're working for the town, this is what, you know, this is what we do. You know, you got this to drive, you got that to drive, you got the shovel here, you know, you got the rake there. You know, and for twenty bucks an hour, I'll stay home first. You know? I mean.
Well, the pay is more than twenty an hour.
Other towns, Plasver's gonna be about thirty bucks in January. I understand they're bigger, it's the same, same work. But no matter.
More hiring.
I've always said that, no matter what town you compare it to, it's the same work. You know? So that's why one man or a woman will move, you know, go from one town to another town.
Yeah, and, and you gotta look at.
Yeah, well, like, it's been said before, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure that out.
And you gotta look at everything with the job too, because they have the benefits added into it.
Exactly.
They have holidays.
I've always thought that without wage.
Fourteen paid holidays almost now that they get. Um, we're keeping up with it, even with the newer holidays, we added them in there for them. But the new guy starting out, starting out up there for you, a dollar less an hour than whatever the.
Which is very good, it's a very good change, that, that took many years though.
It's, uh, it's about twenty-two bucks is what we're gonna start somebody up, a little over that, but.
They're, they're starting more than state DOT.
I've heard.
They, they are.
Town, the towns are getting more.
I, I've asked a couple. If, if they would like this one because it pays more. But.
Just doesn't seem possible.
They're vested already where they are, so it's hard for them. But yeah, it's, we're not totally out of whack, but.
No.
I mean. But, um.
But I just wonder sometimes if they're justifying. That, what they have to do. You know, we're up. I'm, three times, you know, I have to go on twenty-four hours in the winter, it's coming, you know?
No, and, and you've been working short two guys up there, I know you've been working a lot, plus whatever I've asked you to work with me on, as far as the crosswalks and everything else.
Not, not just you, it's been, you know, Mr. Campbell for, for many years also.
And I've tried to. I've tried to help him though, I mean, he, he'll tell you that I ran the tractor for him and put clay out with him, and. I, I'm trying to fill in because we're short staffed down here.
You know, and I, 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 I don't feel good not being able to help everybody in the town. You know, I really don't, I mean, I wish I could do more.
So. It, it looks like the, the highest I see by a local town this year. And I don't know what they're gonna end up doing, the closest to you, what you're asking for, Beeman Town. That superintendent, highway superintendent put in for eight percent. Uh, most of them look like they're around five percent.
Well, town of Plasver is going up from eighty-three thousand to eighty-nine. You wanna compare? That's a good comparison, you know, my sixty.
Five percent.
No, five percent. Roughly.
Would you say eighty-three to eighty-nine?
As far as I, I know, you can quote me for that, but you.
Projected, or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I'll stand corrected in a heartbeat. And he's the one that never lost the thing, right from the start.
One thousand one hundred fifty dollars?
Yeah.
What was it you went up from?
Eighty-three, is that what you said, eighty-three?
It was eighty-three, it lived to eighty-nine.
That's what you put in for? Doesn't mean.
I don't.
It's a orbit.
I don't know, I think it was just.
I come up with four thousand more than fifty dollars, is that what you came up with?
No, I came up with seven percent increase for.
Oh, yeah, 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 but I'm saying if you did a five percent.
Yep.
I don't believe he asked for that, I think.
Which would make that about eighty-seven thousand. It's at eighty-nine, sorry, you'd give about sixty, seventy percent.
Well, the only reason I question it is, here we are, we're talking about, are we gonna cut everybody from the three percent cost of living, and then we still have. You know?
The highway.
And I'm not saying that Mike doesn't deserve it.
It's been, it's already been done, it's been fast practice, he's already done that. Couple of years ago.
To do.
Ten percent?
Reset large?
No, I mean, no, you.
Well, we, we never did it as a cost of living though, we increased the salary. Didn't take a, didn't add three percent on top of mine last year. We just moved the salary. To twenty-four. It, it, we, I, I didn't take three percent on top of that too, also. Alls we did is right size the salary, the, just like we did with yours. We, actually, we gave you the following year a three percent on top of it. Which would be what they would be doing for maybe this year, but for anybody else that we get three percent for. But there's a difference, what I'm trying to say is, there's a difference between moving the salary to increase it to. What the average is around for other towns.
Well, it's all dollars and cents from the taxpayers, no matter how we look at this thing.
It certainly is, but we've never changed a percentage core. You know what I'm saying? We may have changed what the salary was down here. Either to lower or to higher, or raise it, but, uh, to, to conform it. But we've never changed what the cost of living was individually. But there are, like, right here in front of me, there are statistics that show that. The highway superintendent is asking for more than what the rest of them are. Just in those two instances, one is at five, the other is at.
You know, and I had no clue you guys were gonna go three percent for yourself, which, you know, doesn't matter, I'm just saying. I had no idea.
Would you?
You know?
Would you think a, a, a five percent would be?
Well, I'd like eight.
I'd like eight.
Yeah.
But five percent would be very satisfactory.
But there again, that's where we're getting into that water, I didn't wanna get where we're. We're changing the, the cost of living to one for the other, but there is precedence for it in the other towns, I will tell you that. What they do, I have no idea, 'cause they're doing the same thing we're doing right now. Just 'cause he put in for that, or those two entities of visuals put in for those, doesn't mean they're gonna get them.
We gotta look at his ten percent, seven percent, and his three percent cost of living. Plain and simple.
It's only a three percent cost of living?
Well, it, you're asking for a raise in your salary, but altogether. What they're, what they, they're saying ten percent, it's not really ten percent, 'cause if it's a three percent cost of living raise.
Right.
You're really getting seven percent.
Seven percent, correct, so that's why eight would make you feel better.
Right?
Yes.
If, if he increases the salary.
That's true, it's the three percent. They're without anything.
And he did increase the salary in his candidate budget. He went from sixty thousand seven seventy.
Right.
And he's asking for sixty-six thousand eight forty-seven, minus your three percent. Howard, you got the calculator.
Sixty.
So really what he's asking for.
Three percent, that's just the cost of living, you know, that's just for you to survive. You know, it's.
He's looking for a forty-two fifty increase in salary over the cost of living.
So you're saying forty-two fifty plus three percent?
Plus three percent, looking for his cost of living plus eighty, forty-two fifty increase.
Is this something else for everyone to come in, want a, an, a rate increase in the day?
Well, yeah, I sold it to the town board inside what that would be, they don't get to just.
So that should be addressed in a different car. Right?
Well, it's the budget for the year, so either way, we have to budget for it. You know, whether it's the right time or not, I agree with you, Michael, um, that, you know. Did he, he ask for a ten percent, or did he ask to go to sixty-six thousand eight forty-seven, which equals a ten percent rate? You know what I'm saying, is he asking for? Well, I'm saying if we, we say across the board, that's where Donna was coming in, if we could say across the board. We're gonna give everybody a three percent, you take that three percent off, which would be a seven percent raise, so the seven percent raise. Is what Howard just figured out, why he'd like his new salary to start out prior to the three percent rate. And I'm gonna agree with Reggie, the, either way, it, it's all taxpayers' money. You know what I mean, it's whether or not the board feels that Mike's salary should be at. Sixty-six thousand eight forty-seven for the year.
Cause when you take the, uh, twenty twenty, yeah, the sixty thousand.
I wish I, I brought last year's, I'm sorry, go ahead now.
When you, when you take the sixty thousand, seven seventy, and add the three percent, you come up to sixty-two five ninety-three. And you subtract that from sixty-six eight forty-seven, that's where you come up with the.
Four thousand.
Four thousand, whatever.
He's asking for an increase to the salary. He just did it as a ten percent raise overall, instead of breaking it up like that, but basically, that's what. You're really asking for is an additional seven percent on your salary.
Yeah, so in reality.
So what is Beeman Town, do you know?
Do you know what this Beeman Town?
No.
No, I don't at this time, I got, I got off.
What about proof, you know?
I think, I think proof probably sixty, sixty-seven, just, just.
It's always nice to have some comparison, that's why I brought the other one in for the other things, just to see where we're at. Like I did with mine, you know, at the end. And, and just to see that we're in conformity with the rest of the towns. Cause I mean, you agree that the, the previous superintendent's was. Much higher than any of our surrounding towns, other than the Coxay Town and the Town of Plasver. So that's why we did that.
That's the money that I want.
Like Reggie rightly pointed out, it was very high for a class two town like that.
Can you look at the, uh, Mike's increase that he's asking for over what the new twenty-twenty-three budget would be? That's a six point seven nine percent increase. Almost a seven percent.
So if you're talking about that, that seven percent that Reggie was asking, and Mr. Donal was asking about, that's where a lot of it is, is right there.
Can we get some fingers tomorrow, and dress it for back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Me, I'm not, I'm not up, up personally, myself on the board, I'm not above. Raising you to get you into conformity with our other towns.
That's why we're here.
Yeah.
You know.
And, um. I don't, I don't think you're extremely low, I don't think you're extremely high.
I am.
So it'd be nice to have some comparative.
Yeah, I, I, I could get it in a heartbeat if you bring it from that garage.
Yeah, if you could bring us back a couple tomorrow, from a couple areas, just so we have something to, does that make sense? Just to compare it to, and that way, if we need to bring you up. Because basically, if we had to replace you, that's the first thing somebody's gonna look at when they're taking that job, or wanting to run for the job. Or for any elected position, is it worth what the salary is?
Well, you know, basically, we're saying with you, you know.
They can tell you, it, it isn't worth it, you gotta wanna do it.
Hey, you don't have to praise him though.
Well, I mean.
But we do work good together, we're a good team, but, uh.
Kevin, shouldn't we adjourn until tomorrow night?
Well, you can go through stuff that you.
Oh, we're so keen with Mary and her.
Yeah, it's just a few things that, I mean, we found things tonight, we're gonna look at for tomorrow night, so. We might find a few more that are like that.
Can I ask you one quick, about, I mean, highway budget?
Yeah.
You know, the guy that was working up there was doing mechanic work, and he was a vehicle operator also?
Yep.
Now, how much more an hour did he make? Wasn't a whole lot, right?
Dollar maybe, Mike?
Dollar fifty maybe?
Actually, actually.
So a man that has that kind of skill, that can repair the truck if he was operating, don't you think he should be compensated for that? By more than a dollar an hour?
That is, that is their compensation. It is the compensation for sure.
That isn't much, but a man with that. That isn't much for a man with that kinda skill.
But yet, the um. The crew, the crew leader, the crew worker, he gets the most. And he's been there the less time. But he he does the work, this is where I'm coming from. You you do the same work from town to town to town to town.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the man that repairs the truck.
Correct.
You know, he has the potential to save the town big money by repairing the trucks in-house, and I think he should be compensated.
Massive.
Well, I said that two years ago when we hired him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you guys did work real hard.
But I can't change a negotiated contract, and they just all signed. We all signed it, I should say, a new contract for another three years. So that's something that they should bring up during their negotiations, if they want that position to be hired than what. Or fifty-eight, dollar thirty or whatever it is, I don't have the contract right in front of me, it's a dollar something extra or nothing. If if you got a diesel mechanic. It's a that's a specific trade, that's a.
They're they're worth big money.
Skill. Alright, um. Was anything else, anybody wanna look at on this page?
Hmm, yeah, I got a question on youth programs, P S.
Yep.
Now, is that the organizers and?
What's the line I remember?
Um, it's.
Eight seven one four zero point one.
Point one?
Yep.
That is the summer employees. That work, and I I may have.
And you, I found that out today.
Yeah, you're both in.
I'm gonna.
What Mary said, the the forty, remember Kevin, we you're part of the forty-three thousand, five hundred.
Right, K uh.
Oh, together, yeah.
I was talking about the first one, seventy-one, forty, one hundred?
Yep.
No, no, I was talking about the youth programs, P S, seventy-three, one ten.
No, he was asking.
Alright, that is that is on my particular budget that I get from Mary, there are three different things that go into that. Uh, that's my salary, the coach's salary, and that was part of the buildings and grounds person's salary. So those all add up to that figure.
Yeah, cause the buildings and grounds has two. The. Buildings and grounds is on, the rest of it is on page four.
Two to nine thousand.
That that eight one six two zero point one is personal service, that's part of the the buildings and grounds salary. And the other, the other part is in what Sam just said.
He split like the zoning and Satan codes.
Cause he does, he does name.
So Sam, what is what is your specific salary for you?
Right now?
Yeah. I I couldn't, I couldn't see.
Ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
How much?
Ten thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Less than the dog catcher.
Yeah.
And I I did a little math the other day, Reggie, and if I worked only eighteen and three-quarter hours a week. That would be eleven dollars and one cent.
An hour.
If I only worked.
Way under minimum wage, and this is one of the ones I was talking about that I think should be right sized. Not as a coal, not as a cost of living, but just the salary itself.
Upgraded.
Should be upgraded.
Can you call that?
Because. We've given him more responsibility, he plows now, not only for here, in the parks. But he plows the whole highway department up there, parking lot for Mike up there in the winter.
I fixed your veterans' flag today too.
And he fixes my veterans' flag, it's the second one in about three weeks that he's had to fix, right almost next to each other on the main street. Um, but he's basically been doing Danny's job and his job since June. And I can't seem to find somebody to hire for that job, even though we advertised it, and I. I guess the next step is to try to go through one of the employment uh firms to see if we, they can't hire it for us. But.
Who is under the uh seventy-one, forty point one playground R C rec center, P S?
That is the kids that we hired during the summer.
That summer help?
Any summer help that we hired, and actually, I may have written misread. On the sheet that I got from Mary, and. I don't think so, but possibly I may have put that lower than it should have been in my request. I'd have to go back and check that tomorrow.
Yeah, cause it's a deer case.
You wanna see it, Sam?
Uh, I got.
Okay.
The the second line, Howard, uh seventy-one, forty, four hundred, the decrease in there, uh there was money that we received from a grant. That was uh part of something was going on that involved recreation, so the extra twenty-five hundred dollars was placed in. There last year in the budget, but so I cut that back out this year, cause we're not getting that.
Okay. So what was the twenty-five percent increase for? The seventy-three, ten, one hundred?
And Howard, if you look at the uh seventy-three, ten, two hundred, it shows a sizable increase.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I put in for an increase, but then again, as my budget has more lines than this particular budget does. Um, Mary had moved another item into that as well, so uh that. Two thousand dollars at the end was that other part that she moved in, so that makes that, you know.
That was the E Q, youth programs in equipment? That two thousand?
Yeah, the seventy-three, ten, two hundred.
Right, cause you said even the softballs went up last year, what 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 did you tell?
Softballs, softballs that I could buy in uh March of, March, April, May of twenty-twenty-one. Sixty-two dollars a dozen, they're now a hundred and twelve.
Double.
And I used to be able to buy cans of striping paint, three cases at a time for a hundred and thirty dollars, they're now eighty dollars a case.
Yeah, that's three times as much as what it was.
So it's a the P S, is that for a raise, Sam?
In the personal services, uh yeah, so that's.
Yeah.
That's her raise.
With the.
Plus the three percent for everybody else.
Yes.
Hey, what? Not that I'm disputing it, but what are you asking for a raise for yourself up to?
I would like to see my pay go to eighteen thousand dollars.
Is there?
At nine hundred and seventy-five hours.
I agree.
Uh, the course of the year, that comes out to, I think about seventeen something an hour.
Yeah.
Which I feel is a little more appropriate than eleven.
Is there any way, since he's doing basically two, or would you have to put in for? Trying to figure out if we take some of Danny's leftover salary for you for this year, since you're putting in double the time, but then that puts him over eighteen.
What happens if we, what happens if we hire a guy?
Huh?
What happens if we hire a guy?
But then you get cut back on your hours. But if we. Huh?
He's left out already.
No, he's a.
The amount of time. How many? Yeah, cause you mentioned eighteen point five before. Hours.
Eighteen and three-quarter hours per week for a part-time employee.
Right.
So if I worked the same as a part-time employee, that the salary I'm getting is eleven dollars.
Right.
And a cent an hour. And I work far more than that hours, so.
What I'm thinking is if he's working both Danny's and his own job right now. It's already budgeted, why couldn't we compensate him for the extra time he's putting in?
Cause the salary.
Cause hopefully too, we got somebody that Sam will do all.
That's what I say, he'd have to put in for that.
Plowing and everything else.
That would be nice.
So it'd be nice to get somebody, if you guys go to that um.
Source one or whatever.
Source one, Sam won't have to plow, and Sam won't have to do what somebody else is supposed to do.
Well, I know Sam well enough that he's still gonna, he's still gonna do, so what? I would, I would say is that. He is a salary down here that hasn't been increased.
Yep.
For years, to bring him up with what the rest of the towns are paying the rec guys.
I just don't understand how after. Thirty-eight years, I make less than dog control officer.
It's easy to do, they wanted the court clerk to do the same thing.
Has the town reached out to the county at all, because there are uh fifty-three people at the county nursing home that have state benefits. They're already in the system, they're union, C S E A, I don't know if this position is or not, that are gonna lose their jobs, and the nursing home is getting laid off, so the county. Is trying to backfill them into positions, but obviously, there's just so many positions to backfill them into. So would it be beneficial for the town to reach out to the county, get a list of those employees? See which ones, cause there are obviously janitorial building and ground positions at the nursing home, uh to maybe see if one of them are interested.
It's a great idea. I don't know, do you have that list, or you want me to contact you?
I would contact Mike Zerlo or Ken Ken Bloom at at the county, someone in personnel, um but that's a list that I would go after. Cause you already know that they're in the union, which I think usually is a preference, I don't know if this is a union position or no, so.
They're not.
They're not, okay, but regardless, they're probably still involved in the New York State local retirement system.
Oh, I shouldn't say that, because if they have anybody with a C D L, that one is union. And they may for plowing or whatever they're doing around the the nursing home.
Then you're keeping some of the people employed that may lose their job too.
Right, I was reaching out to um. The county highway department, and we're gonna ask them if they have a list.
Well, I know nurses don't kinda think out of the box, because you know, you'd think that all nurses are there, but obviously, they have a janitorial, building, crew staff that are gonna need jobs after.
No, I'm sure they have building and grounds there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a, it's a great.
What's that? Well, they're closing the nursing home, so you know, the county's gonna try to absorb as many people as they can.
So that's Clint County Nursing Home, I think.
You think it may be online?
I don't know if that's, that list is public online, but it's definitely public through, you know, personnel.
Sure, sure, right, I can uh reach out to Mike Zerlo, see if he can get me in touch with their H R person to see, cause I'm sure that their H R person isn't one that's trying to get them. Jobs, but yeah, and she should, uh he should have a good list for us at all, that's a great idea, thank you, Dave. Um, which brings us back to this.
Mm-hmm.
Um. It's a substantial raise. Just like Mike just feels he's worked at, um I'm gonna play devil's advocate, okay? Um, what I'd like to see is again, what some of our local towns are paying their rec positions. And I asked Mike to do that for his highway. If you don't mind giving me a few towns. To give me what they are, so that we can make a better informed decision tomorrow night on what it is, as far as I'm concerned. I don't wanna speak for myself, I I I believe that your salary is in need of right sizing. And you definitely are putting in the hours. Uh, so you went above and beyond from what you've had to do. Performance base, like Mike probably says, you can't get much more performance out of you without us killing you, so.
I will check with some other towns.
Yeah, just give me a a couple to go off of, and then is there anybody that's not? In favor of right sizing that salary, you know, so get something, close up. Yeah, but I mean, I wanna put him through that if we're just gonna tell him, no, we're letting people manage. If 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 everybody willing to look at, to see where everybody else is?
Yeah.
And then, like I say, uh, I wanna make sure that. They're doing what you're doing, okay, so if they're just in charge of the the rec, you know, uh summer programs. And running the rec department, and they're not taking on the extra jobs, that's something that we will look at.
Some towns have multiple people, and they do it by the particular sport, one person who runs a certain sport, some else who runs another sport. And then they'll take, I assume, I don't know for sure, take care of whatever fields or something you're using, but. Then again, they may have a maintenance staff in each town that does it.
Right, and I know even when we had Danny, you were pretty much doing all the plowing, you took it upon yourself as a salary.
Danny Danny did it a couple of times, just when I.
Couldn't make it.
I was gonna go somewhere for a for a weekend, but.
So that's all I'm saying, is make sure whatever um you bring back to us, that the the job descriptions.
Right.
Are kinda the same, if they're not, just let us know that, so that we can take that into consideration, if that makes sense, Dave. Does it make sense to everybody else?
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'll mark that one as tomorrow.
Danny bored yet, wants to come back to work?
I asked him that.
Danny bored yet, wanted to come back to work?
Uh, no, Danny is not bored, he's very busy, and uh. I don't think he's prepared enough to come back.
That's pretty much what I heard, when he said, came in seeing me a week ago. That was the first question I asked, I said, you bored yet, you ready to come back to work, I goes, not in the least. He goes, I'm trying to figure out how I was doing everything I was doing while I was doing this too, and I said, like everybody else. Alright.
He has at least stayed in his house this. He's got bolts and some meat on him, so.
Um, historian would be the next one. And I again, she put in for a five percent. I'm hesitant to give anybody a higher cost of living than anybody else. I think that again, that should be looked at on whether or not we should increase that salary. And then keep the three percent in alignment with everybody else.
Now, is that position, is that both for that amount of money?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that five percent is gonna be split between her and another person anyhow, so she's not gonna see a full five percent, am I right? No?
No, that's 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 the only line, and.
Yep, she would see five percent of her original.
She might have asked for a five percent cost of living raise, cause a lot of your cost of living raises five percent.
Yeah. And that that five percent represents two hundred and fourteen bucks. Because their salaries are pretty low. It's it's a vital part of the town, and it's actually written in town law that we have to have an historian. And if I had to replace her, it'd be hard pressed to find somebody that takes the painstaking time that she does. And doing it. Uh, but the only thing I say is, like I said, is I don't wanna get into uh cost of living raises. As an overall being different from anybody else, I'd rather see a salary increase because we feel there's a need to. Than to do a cost of living, have a different, different percentage, but that this one.
Like an open care one, should you do that?
Yeah. So like I said, I I think that if we're doing that, then it should be the difference of. The two percent, right, to add to their salary, their their salaries, if that's all we're really asking for. Does that make sense to everybody? Is there anybody against it, or you're kinda looking like you got a problem?
So it's another position that we're upgrading the salary and then.
I I I'm just, I'm just saying that, five for one.
I'm not saying she's not worth it, I'm not saying.
Yeah, yeah. No, alls I'm saying is. As a as a supervisor, and I've worked at many positions as a supervisor, it's never good to give somebody a higher cost of living than you do on our employee in the same.
How about her assistant, would she be going up a lot?
Well, the salary is based for both of them.
For both of them.
So you're looking at a hundred and seven dollars a piece, actually a year?
Oh, the E, oh, okay, okay.
No, they're not equal, are they?
No, yeah, cause she's assistant.
The assistant works at home.
Yeah, but they're on the same line, I don't.
They're on the same line.
They're on the same line, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, how it's split.
I wanna, I I I'm al- I'm almost tempted to say that uh the historian gets three thousand, and the other one gets the half. Like the fourteen ninety-two, or the uh before that.
Thousand, four ninety-two.
Yeah. Three thousand, and um she gets twelve seventy-eight, the assistant.
So basically, she would get two-thirds of the two four, two hundred and fourteen bucks, and then uh the other one would get.
That's why you gotta find out if she. That's why you gotta find out if she asked for five percent cost of living or she wanted a raise on top of that, cause it would be in that worksheet.
Yeah, well, I think plugged in is one though.
One forty-one, increase.
While you're looking at that, you should look for publicity as well, because with all your, your concerts in the park and your parade coming up or your.
No, that's under the beautification, we've been using that money, I'm gonna talk about bringing that up too.
What is publicity, C E?
Yeah, I agree. Let's see right here, looks like she's got it on, there's just the one room, uh, personal services. She breaks everything out, even the cemeteries and everything out, so she keeps up on, because there's a couple cemeteries in town that that's a way we, it's a way we pay for the mowing and stuff during the summer. When Star Falls. I don't see where she breaks it down. Cemetery situation, fifteen hundred bucks. I don't see her two salaries, her two salaries broken down, that's not something. But you're gonna ask her. But either way, it's increase of two hundred and something bucks. So, I guess that brings her back to where we were. We, uh, bringing a portion of, what is it, one hundred and seventy something dollars up in her salary? For the whole year? Will you go with that?
Yes, I am.
I am too. And then, uh, we'll have it so that it reflects a two percent raise on top of whatever that is. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, it's pretty minor, yeah.
And, and I'll tell you a lot, she is, next year, as busy as she was this year, next year we got a hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary coming up in this town, which is gonna be a parade and a bar and everything else, not, not to mention, we're going into the winter carnival season and I've already got it working on that. Like I said, she, she works on way more than just the historian part.
Kevin, just on that page, just more of a question than anything.
Yeah.
On the twenty-five thousand dollar sidewalk allocation.
Mm-hmm.
I noticed in this year, we haven't spent, spent a busy year, but we haven't spent anything yet on it. So we're reallocating another twenty-five thousand or twenty-three.
I thought about that because, um, there are some sidewalk repairs that need to be done up in Skyler Falls.
Yeah.
And even though I'm hesitant to do anything here in the Hamlet, because they will be torn out if we do the water line. Um, we still could use some of that money up there. The other thing that I was thinking about and Sam had asked me is, um, we, if we could hire somebody to cut back the edging, the grass edgings of the sidewalks. And that needs to be done all over the place. Because my intention was with the hiring of the two extra people and, um, getting Danny's position filled is that we could get the sidewalks in some kinda better repair than what they are right now. And if we fail to get somebody hired by next spring to get that accomplished, I would still like to have that money available so that we could put it out to bid, that would have to go out to bid. Unless it's under, again, a ten thousand.
Would we need the full twenty-five thousand?
Well, if.
Maybe back that off a little bit?
I would like to say so, but I would guarantee if we do, uh, hundred feet sidewalk up in Skyler Falls, it's probably gonna be over twenty-five thousand. And that's before we do, I mean, you know a little better about construction work too, you think that's exorbitant, I mean, we haven't used it, it's rolled over every year. It's maintain, actually, we cut it back two years ago. We cut it back to twenty-five thousand, but we didn't take it out altogether.
Start talking about pay scale, you're right, it adds up real quick, there's no doubt. And that's material costs right now too, between.
But the big thing is prevailing wages, like Greg did just say. When you go to prevailing wages, that's why I was trying to get it done, so that the town employees could do it at, you know, seventeen bucks an hour versus paying prevailing scale wages, which is probably twenty-three, uh, I bet you twenty-eight dollars an hour.
But on that same page, Kevin.
Yeah.
Under the programs for the aging.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I had a resident last week inquire about it. Now, that's seventeen hundred dollars, and I know it's been tough with COVID, I understand that. In this year, it's showing that out of the seventeen hundred, nothing has happened. There's been nothing spent so far.
Mm-hmm.
But that's an area that I really think I'd like to see an increase in funding based on if we could get something going for senior citizens and seventeen hundred dollars is really not too much. I mean, I'm not trying to compare it, Sam, with your budget, but I'm just saying the seventeen hundred dollar allocation maybe is not a lot of money for some, a program that we could possibly get going in twenty-three. I agree with that, but on the same theory, my thought is if we had enough money in there that anybody in the town, cause we can't get anybody to run our, our senior group. I know, stuff, yeah. Why don't we buy their membership to Clint County?
We talked about that.
We had actually talked about that.
Yeah, that link.
I mean, yeah. If you have anybody put in.
I think you and Vern were looking into that.
We were, and I hope, I wish William was here, cause he'd comment on that as well.
Right, I think you guys, that was your subcommittee.
But would seventeen hundred, I mean, I mean, I'm sorta conservative on this board, but I, I mean seventeen hundred, it just isn't very much.
But that's just what we're allocating again this year, not what they have in their account. They do have monies in there.
But if we, if we pay for.
You, you have the record on that.
No, I don't, not for last year. If, if we pay for their county membership.
Yep.
I think you're talking, I think it's thirty or thirty-five dollars an individual and fifty or fifty-five for a couple. So even if we go seventeen hundred and seventy-five.
Membership into what?
The, the county.
Clint County seniors. They're, they're, they take trips, they do dinners, they do everything, they organize it, they get everybody together, they run it. You see the senior sentinel that comes out
Yeah.
in the paper, that's what they do.
Yep.
They're organized. Um, right there, we could get twenty-two, twenty-two couples, almost twenty-three couples.
Not, not kinda what they already have built up in the fund that they haven't used. It's not a ton of money, but it's more than what we're adding into it right now, I'll tell you that. I, like I said, I know you guys were looking at the books for that, you requested them, uh,
Yeah.
two meetings back and, uh.
It's too bad that we couldn't merge that together with the historical operation down here. Even if we had to pay a little bit more money for that to have that office here handling these activities.
I can talk to Barb and see if she's willing to take that over.
Because that'd be just great, I think.
And, and in that case, it would be an additional job duties for her.
You gotta remember too, you gotta figure out if that is part of her duties through civil service.
Right.
I mean, I don't believe that the senior citizens go under her duties. She might do it as an extra.
Right.
But she might not be able to do it.
Right. That's a good point, we need to check that out. First of all, we gotta see if she'd be willing to bite that off. I think she's pretty active with most of her minimums.
She is.
I'm gonna, I know of her. But the biggest thing is, uh, like I say, I guess, going along with Donna's, you know, line of thinking. As long as you're on those two committees, you've got something you'd be willing to check and see.
Yes.
And bring back for tomorrow. And call and see what it would cost, say, and, and you know what a good question might be for him? Hey, what is, uh, Beating Town or what, or Shazie or, uh, Prue or whatever? Do they do anything like that?
Sure.
And if they do, what do they usually set aside for? Cause we never did that, so it's a new avenue for us.
Okay.
And then we can put the information out there, that way we're not getting into civil service hunting. So, and we can maybe set it up so that this year is set up, so that you guys.
So possibly this board might put a little more than seventeen hundred dollars in there, in that account?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll see what they got in there, if you can find that out, like I say, find out what they have in that account. Uh, find out if the seventeen hundred is sufficient to addition for a membership. And the biggest thing is to find out how many of them are involved with it, or may wanna be involved with it. Or at least at the, the, the onset, see what other towns, once they, if they are indeed in the Clint County, um, senior citizens group, what do they usually get for participation? And that would help us kinda figure out what a budget should be for it. I don't think there's anybody that's looking to, to take anything away from my seniors, that's for sure.
No, no.
I think what Howard said too about the county, it gives them more avenues.
To do different stuff.
Uh, you know, you can't work, you used to be able to the school to hire a bus and take them places, you can't do that anymore.
Right, they used to provide them, now you gotta hire them. Fuel's so expensive, they gotta pay the bus driver and.
And the county has more avenues where they could.
So if you wanna bring that back tomorrow, that'd be great.
I will, thank you. They've got an active website, I'll check that out, sure.
Let's see if we can get ahold of somebody.
I will.
You know what I mean?
Yes, I will. Why isn't that money being, not being spent, is it just that there's a?
They had their, they, they, they had their own group. Um, and a couple of them have passed away and a couple others are hesitant to take over, but the, the biggest thing that put an end to it, cause they were pretty active, e- even the ones that did show up here.
Sure.
Um, was COVID.
I understand.
And when COVID hit, nobody, none of, they were of that tender age where they didn't feel like they wanted to be out in society. That, that was the, the biggest thing that put a kibosh to their whole group and then, uh, here we are, you know, two years into after COVID and it just never took back off, cause now they gotta get their right, they gotta get somebody to fill in those office positions that.
So it's, there's a board.
They, they did, they had their own, and they had, they had their own, uh.
Checking account.
Yeah, they had their own checking account, that's what I wanted, you know, Mr. Five to find out what was in there and left over, I know they have monies in there.
So how do you wanna reach to those, to those seniors? Would, would it be smart to maybe look at taking some of that seventeen hundred and doing like some sort of mail merge and send out a postcard to every Skyler Falls resident over the age of seventy-five?
We, we don't, but we, we don't, that money goes to them. We can't spend that money.
Gotcha.
They, they decided how they spent it.
Understand.
Sometimes they did, well, they used to do like all the tea and crumpets or whatever, they do snacks in here, they would meet, they would discuss maybe what they wanted to do or where they wanted to go.
How would they advertise, I guess was my, I guess was the wild guess. How would they advertise to let seniors know that those events are?
It's hard to get the word out, you're right, that group of people, they're not, like, even our website.
Yeah, they're not, yeah.
I don't wanna bring the website up again, but it would be an avenue.
But basically, we, we allotted them that money every year and then they decided on what they were wanting to do with it.
And you gotta remember too now, we have J C O in here every day, so it's very hard for them, they're, they're gonna have to meet elsewhere.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so it'd be easier with at the county level and jumping aboard whatever they are doing, there's no doubt. And we discussed that for about a year or more.
Who is running it now? I know there's been a big change, would you know? The last I knew was Carter's and they're no longer doing it. Alright, that's a whole problem, nobody knows.
There was a girl named Phyllis.
Yeah.
That took over, cause Donna hasn't been doing it for a couple of years.
Mrs. Gatto, I believe, name is. Phyllis Gatto? Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, I got all that information about a year ago, when I get to you guys and I was like, you know, whatever you wanna do with it, just let us know. But, uh, sometimes they need a little push to get back together.
You don't talk to Barb as well?
No, she would definitely, that's some information.
Okay.
I'm sure of it. All right, um, Don, just to hit back on what you were talking about, what'd you say, advertisement? Advertisement or advertising?
Publicity, C E, contractual stuff.
What page was that on?
Five.
Five, we're in the middle.
We gotta go back a page.
We're in the very, very middle.
Uh, yeah, so it wouldn't hurt, cause we ended up transferring, we did a budget transfer once this year already. Um, some of the, the bands that we had have a, some, uh, some real good publicity on their own. They put it on their own, um, websites and they have their own followers. Um, we picked up a lot and, and, and again, that's where Barb was in, in instrumental on this. We put out a blitz, um, and I sent a letter out to a bunch of different media, including a Prue, Prue Gazette and different ones that advertised for. Um, but it, it may not hurt to increase that a little bit. What's your thoughts on five hundred bucks or something?
Well, this year already, we, twenty-five.
Yeah.
We got a good website going, some are good on Facebook, you could really promote that pretty easily without spending any very much.
Is this, Kevin, this line item, is this for like your bands and stuff like that?
I would, I would get some of that she took out of there, because there wasn't enough in the, uh, the beautification, which we're gonna get to over on the next one. And that's the one that I, we're gonna have to really add some money to this year. Um, whether we like it or not, there's too much going on, but, uh, if you wanna split it.
Nothing's been taken out of the beautification yet, so apparently she takes everything out of the
Yeah.
um, publicity.
The beautification. That's where we got like, um.
You know where we got our flags?
We, we got some of our flags from there, um, we got a Christmas ones, if you can still see that on the record.
Holiday.
With the holiday banners were from there, we really, I was looking at the lighted ones, they're, uh, pretty expensive, looking at probably eight hundred dollars a piece for the lighted ones. I did take cotton nice act too, uh, they said they'd be willing to. I did take Cock and Nysec too, uh they said they'd be willing to put the outlets on the poles for those. So I guess that's a call whether or not you guys. Wanna go with some of that money and some of that route, but at the very least, when we have our. Hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary next year, we're gonna need flowers and we're gonna need different things around the town. I would think if we're gonna do it right for the parade, can make sure that. We have enough money in that beautification account to take care of some of the expenses and putting on something like that.
You gonna reach out to sponsors for that?
We can reach out to sponsors, um I get a lot of different. Feedback when I do that.
Sure.
You know, because everybody's always asking.
Sure.
And what I wanna make sure is that. We have the ability to at least get what we need to put this thing on, and if we get their sponsors, we could go above and beyond.
There is a large landfill in this area that's owned by a major company that has a lot of money.
And they have been instrumental in several different projects. The wet park down there by you plus.
Sure.
The pump tracks, they donated equipment. Manpower and.
Oh yeah, no, I'm not discounting that, but obviously they like to get their name out there and that's one way to get.
And and I know if I talk to. Um guess how they would probably help, I'm sure they would, but uh. Wh- what are your thoughts? And if she's taking uh, the other thing too is I found out there's, I'm not gonna say we're gonna get it, but I think it's up to a five thousand dollar grant. For bands in the town, which we're gonna put in for for next year. Found out that there were grants out there to to do that, so that's another thing I gotta work on. But whether we get the grant again or not, we still need money in the account, so.
The way I look at it, we only have one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary.
Yeah, I agree. Feels like we had one hundred and fifty-eight, twenty-five years ago. And there's gonna be a lot of work for that.
There is.
But there's gonna be some costs also. Associated with it.
It depends on how fancy we wanna get, if we wanna go with a. A band somewhere at night for. I don't, I don't think we wanna go with fireworks, I don't think we'd be able to afford it.
That's not, you're looking at some expenditure there, but I I was gonna reach out to Claus and see what the. The expense was.
Is the board gonna create a fair committee or a parade committee, sorry?
Yeah, we kinda already tapped on a few individuals at a work session that are willing to help with that. Uh I got a few few resources from local fire departments to put on parades, so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel and. We can get a roster of who they invite to their parades. Way off the topic, but I was thinking pretty much a small. So Mike would probably come in, um you know, car will set up for. Those small picks, you know, the little tiny things right.
Do we wanna do trophies for parade?
Most parades do have trophies, and that's just the way that's, that's a good question. Uh best apparatus, best marching unit, those bands, if they have school bands in them. There's gonna be money involved with trophies, trophies are not inexpensive, I'll tell you that. You could spend fifteen hundred dollars pretty, pretty easily on trophies.
And what month are we gonna host this? Is it during school?
No, I would do it, I would think that we would do it sometime after Katie goes. Still they not to get in the middle of that and before the fair.
You're gonna need school bands.
Yeah, you've lost your school bands that way. That's the only thing, cause when school's out, they they can't get them together.
They can't.
Try that with the fire department.
How many schools have bands anymore?
Saranac does, I believe Peru does, and those are the two that are in our town.
We can check one and see if they're interested, and then we can adjust the schedule a little bit, but you're you're gonna be early.
Yep.
Right?
And I don't know, I don't even think uh Plasker Police, Python Drum are active anymore. We used to get some, we used to pull some down from Canada, but they got very expensive, I don't know if they're still coming down or not. For bands.
Oh, it's late, it's October, I don't know. Doctor, they went back to school.
For uh, Morsel?
Well, the county convention, yeah.
Yeah, no, we hosted, it was always during the summer.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and school's out, that's why we couldn't get the bands.
Well, we had bands there, at different times, not all of them, but.
We used to hire uh a couple of Canadian bands that came down.
So.
I have a question about one, can I, I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah.
I didn't in Canada, but uh I have a question about one of these line items, I don't know if I can address you now. It's one of the elections line item.
Yeah, well, I was gonna reach out to you tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
But if you're here now, we can go back to that one, because I was gonna ask what you thought should be. A good increase for that.
Page four, the very top one.
Yeah.
Um the budget still is in review process with the county right now, so I really can't disclose numbers. Um I would say that the. Number would be adequate, because you had three elections this year that were ran, and you're probably only gonna have at most two next year. Um one area where I have heard complaints and it would also be a reduction in the budget. Um is to look at alternate poll sites besides Saint Alexander's Church. Um one of the biggest complaints that I get is the separation of church and state from people, having to walk into a church to vote. Um regardless of our opinion on that, it is a, it is a uh.
Contagion.
Yeah, for sure, and and we are paying, I believe it's either two or four hundred dollars each election to Saint Alexander's Church as a town.
We pass that and the board of elections is starting to stand.
Correct, and I and and I had that conversation, that that was done, uh I believe five or six years ago, if I'm not mistaken, maybe even longer. Where it used to be at the town garage, and then it wasn't handicap accessible, so the commissioners felt that it was uh appropriate to move that to Saint Alexander's Church. Um I think there are other areas in the town that we could reach out. Uh I think the meeting room at the fire station is plenty big enough to hold an election, we use, we use Saranac Fire Station and Redford Fire Station. Carmella Head Fire Station for poll sites, um and then whatever the town may suggest. You know, ultimately, in election law, the election commissioners have the final say on where a poll site is, so. I think that at the time, maybe uh. The town wasn't given as much say in the where they wanted their poll site, but now I think you probably have a little more say in where. That would be the most advantageous for the task there, and for the people, I guess, you know.
We we did host it here too, we had plenty of room in here for everybody.
So so the the only kicker that I would say about this is. Um if you can open up the courtroom and you had this entire room, uh I think that that would probably be fair. But it wouldn't be able to just be this courtroom.
I think we used to use different offices, didn't we?
Yeah, but that was when there were different districts.
Yeah, and and Donna and I, you know, we've talked off the record about that, you know, just some of the stuff and. Uh but putting different election districts in different rooms, I would be. It would be hard pressed not to say that they're two different poll sites, and if you open up that can of worms and the town's gonna get charged for more than one poll site. Um which is gonna be an increase in the budget, so I don't think that would be a wise decision on Skyler Falls, trying to expand how many poll sites we have. When, you know, we were just talking about salaries and comparing other towns, Peru only has one poll site, Beating Town only has one poll site. There's no reason for Skyler Falls that way.
So there was any reason why this room wouldn't handle with the opening of a divider?
I wouldn't be able to make that determination one-sided, cause it would have to be bipartisan, but in my view, both rooms would be adequate.
What if you had court?
Um as long as, and and I guess that Mike touches on it, as long as this building was closed on that day.
We were always closed on Election Day. Um and the thing of it is, is that uh with the with the machines being so small now.
What's that saying, like sixteen?
Even the handicap, when they had it one time for the machine, they had it right out there outside the door.
Right, oh, yeah, and Skyler Falls only has two election machines, you only have the big B M D in and you have one scanner, so. You know, it'd be very easy to place that.
Our capacity says sixty in here by far the code, so I I I agree with you, I think.
Sixty, and I think it's uh has to be at least sixty over there, since.
Well, we've attended meetings together, you've been inside the Beating Town Town Hall before, correct? That meeting room upstairs, if you open this up, is 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 comparable size, and they're holding four election districts at that poll site where we're only holding three. Uh so I I would say that that's adequate, and obviously it's a town hall, so it already would have eighty-eight compliance, so it would be following. Uh but what would happen is, is the town board would have to put a request in to the election board, ask it for a poll site change. And then these commissioners, whoever they are at the time, whether it be this year or next year, would come out and do a site review and make sure that it meets.
Still in your. Opinion, and and you only wanna understand that, you think that that would be sufficient for next year's?
Uh for next year poll site? Yeah, I don't see why not. I don't see why not, as long as the uh the counterpart was in agreement with it, which I don't see why they wouldn't be, because. It needs the criteria for the poll site, and we really do try to work with whatever the town wants.
Right, but I mean, the the budget, you don't, you don't see a a need to increase to the, I wasn't sure when I talked to you a few months back, whether you thought.
There's so many variables that.
Just cause they're doing so many more days now and you got more pollster people that you're paying.
Tendatively, tendatively, you know, in a normal year, if 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 next year is a normal year, I would say that it's it's adequate.
Okay.
Uh but there are a lot of variables, uh you know, we do have races coming up next year that are local races that, you know. I I don't wanna throw hypotheticals out there, but you wanna be prepared as a town, so be prepared for the worst, correct? So we have a legislative race in Area Five. If you have a primary in Area Five in June, New York State election law requires that we have nine days of early voting in that area. So you would have to have nine days of early voting in Skyler Falls. That would be a quite an expense addition to your budget, you probably would have. You know, if you're only at sixteen thousand, maybe as much as a twenty-five or thirty percent increase, it could be four or five grand to run nine days of early voting. Um it's a hypothetical, but it's still possible, because the process says that, you know, we have primaries sometimes for different races and.
Are they ever thinking about having early voting in the county clerk office like Vermont does?
I don't know, um you know, election law is changing every every day, um it really depends on, you know, who's in Albany at the time. Um but I don't, I don't see that changing as far as. There being nine days of early voting in the area that the race is held, um they obviously do that for the reason of they want the people in that area to have a poll site that's close to them and. Encourage voting.
We just have a planning board meeting last year on Election Day.
Yeah, like that.
Yeah.
No.
Well, that was because it wasn't here either.
Wasn't me?
I mean, we're closed, um.
The the advantage is that you would save, you know, a little bit of money, it wouldn't be a lot, but I mean, your budget's only sixteen thousand, so you're gonna save four or five percent. Of that budget by cutting out that money that we're paying to Saint Alexander's and you're kinda giving people uh. A little more of a peace of mind if they're not walking into a church to vote, they're walking into a town hall.
So I guess up to us, are we good with that sixteen eight oh seven? Everybody?
Sure.
Alright, now I'm scratching that off for tomorrow, because you were gonna be my first phone call.
Uh Kevin, we should do a uh ASAP to the board of commissioners that we would like to see if they can come in.
Yep.
Yeah, definitely wouldn't be able to take effect for this November, cause we're so close, we've already, you know, established our poll sites and stuff. Maybe something you could do down by June.
Are we done with the cha- uh page five, if we were at the historian?
Yeah, um we're all, we're all good with the historian, right?
Yeah.
Um yeah, Mike's gonna bring back a. A couple surrounding uh surrounding towns, so isn't Sammy on his?
You know, I like to see. Under community beautification. Because of what we've got coming up and not knowing what it's gonna cost, I like to see. Taking. From the sidewalk account, five thousand, putting it over there, and then if we don't use it for the beautification, put it back in sidewalks.
I wanted to increase it anyways, but uh if you wanted to.
So I'm just, that way right now, we're keeping the number right where it is.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think you're gonna, I think you're gonna be over. You wanna transfer ten, and we can do what we can do with the sidewalks, with fifteen. Cause I think you're gonna use it.
Oh, I think so too, but.
Uh two, what do you guys think?
We get some sponsorship, but you know, we can't count on that.
No, and we can always transfer it, transfer it back, do a line item, transfer it one way or the other, but. I mean, we could do it the other way too, but we know upfront that next year's gonna cost us some in uh what we're sponsoring. So what page was the sidewalks on?
Sidewalks is on five, about third.
Yep, gotcha. Alright, so I guess we're looking, I would say, if we're gonna do that, you might as well transfer at least ten over. Is there anybody opposed to that? No? Alright, so change that one to fifteen.
Make this one twelve.
I I would think though, why don't you just leave it open-ended where it's either publicity, C E, whatever Mary wants to put it in the line item. Because like I said, in beautification, you didn't use anything.
Huh?
In beautification, you haven't used anything, so everything that you used so far.
Yeah.
Last year.
But we did that at the, when we did the Winter Carnival. And maybe that's why she didn't take anything out, cause we still got um, you know, the horse rides that we gotta pay for and. We usually do get some sponsored food, but we bring down like.
You didn't use anything last year. Last year's actual in two thousand twenty-one was zero.
On which one?
In the beautification.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-zero.
And we haven't used anything today. I'm just saying that whatever she wants to put, I mean, it doesn't matter, just whatever mine is.
I'm wondering if she transferred it over.
I don't know.
She's not here, cause she had to get that from somewhere. So on publicity, I guess it doesn't matter what we call it. If you want, you wanna.
Either one.
Yeah.
We used uh twenty twenty-one. A thousand eighty-eight dollars went over it. And it looks like I agree with you, to date this year, we use two thousand four seventy-eight, so she must be doing the bands and everything out of there. So if you want, we'll leave the beautification where it is or and uh move the ten over to there to make that eleven, does that make sense to everybody?
Well, along those lines, and I'd like to bring it up again, I've mentioned it before. Regarding, some of the taxpayers have been calling me, inquiring. About getting a sign at this. Campus right here, at the town hall, advertising meetings. Advertising activities, and I'd like to know in the budget, could we possibly throw like five thousand dollars in that? Budget item and see what we can come up with for a sign.
Five thousand?
Just to see, it won't be fancy, but they don't want it fancy.
We were gonna talk with the fire department too, right?
Right.
Yeah, I am.
Been down that path before, sure, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
No, they 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 have advertised things for us um in the past.
What about?
As long as it's not political, they'll they'll advertise it. Um.
Morsville Elementary School just installed a new.
They did.
Sign on Monday.
I guarantee you it was. Forty-seven thousand.
No, I'm not disagreeing with the cost, but I'm saying what about reaching out to them to try to get some information on their board?
Yeah, they can go online, I I have a lot of it in the office, the last time this was brought up, I looked at it and I ran the numbers and I think that. About the cheapest I could find was around twelve or eighteen thousand.
Oh, yeah, I'm not disagreeing, I'm saying, why don't we reach, why can't the town reach out to the school and see if they can put the.
Oh, put something on.
On their sign.
Yeah, school board, I think, right?
Yeah.
Have to go to the school board, I don't think the principal could do that, I think it'd have to go through the school board.
Well, it depends on, I guess, who's willing to fund the assignment or if it's.
A continual change, there'd be, there's some work involved in doing that.
Sure.
For sure.
Sure.
Just to keep up with it.
Yeah, right, so if we had one here. Our personnel in here, some of our personnel.
Our personnel in here, some of our personnel could help out.
Yeah, we can put a councilman in charge of that.
Sure, or the receptionist. So I mean, could you guys see allocating some funding for it?
I would think we need to do something with the computer, right? Wouldn't it be the computer or the web guide to get access to do that?
Well, you have to do it on a computer, you have to buy a separate computer, that doesn't come with a sign. Um you're looking at, you're looking at eight uh probably eight hundred dollars to twelve hundred dollars to get a computer system. To do it and I would say that it. I guess, I've never been, I'm just telling you it's more expensive than what you think it's gonna be. What I would look at is.
Sixty years ago.
As I've been saying, we got enough money in unallocated fund reserve right now, that we need to start doing some capital improvement projects. So if we wanna look at that one as a specific capital improvement project and put that out to a public fair, like we'll do with every other one. And have them here may or yea, whether they like that. And then uh we can go from there on whether they're gonna spend the money on a sign. But uh I I would say we got plenty in there, without changing, I'm trying to go over a two percent budget here. Like I said, I I we did pass, I look a lot, allow us to do it, but I'm trying to keep it within as close as I can to the two percent. And we have some stuff that is outside a normal year for expenditures with, like I say, a hundred and fifty. A hundred and seventy-five, fifty-one, we're just coming out from.
And we could dip into our ARPA funding. There's there's some there left, for sure.
As long as it is, as long as it falls underneath that the ARPA this line. Um it ours is a general, we accepted the general rule that we've lost ten million dollars. Of revenue, that's how we ended up um deciding what we would do on that, so that opened up that funding to a lot more. But again, I think that uh we have quite a few projects that are already in the works on our ARPA funding and we're not quite sure where that increases. Where they're gonna all roll out, um. Can't tell you, I I will tell you that I was surprised to tell that that ride course came in in one bed at two hundred and three thousand. I would, I would say, I'm only one, and I have nothing against the sign, other than. I don't know how many people are gonna see it unless they wanna drive over here to look at it and there may be some people that do that. Because they're only with the traffic, they're going the main road, but if you're, the board wants to get a sign, then I would spend it out of the. Unallocated fund reserve as a capital improvement project to the town property.
I would say the best thing to do is to get the pricing, figure out what it's gonna cost and put it out for a public vote.
Right, if we do a public improvement uh project of any kind, then we're gonna have to do a hearing on it and make sure that. The town is on board at the hearing before we transfer money out of the, is that correct?
I don't, I don't know.
I think that's how it goes, um. My concern was whether it would offset the two percent. So that's why I'm trying to figure out from the time it goes off is how it goes, so that's like two different, two different ways here. But we need to start utilizing some of that money for capital improvements. Does that work for it?
Yeah.
Kevin, what if you put signs at multiple locations?
That's an even better idea. Yeah, the sign's kinda like the website, it's only as good as the person on it.
Well, the location does have to be within certain distance, I believe. From night controls.
Yeah, and and I could tell you going by, you know, trying to start any. But even the sign up of the Marshall School has moving. It goes against our zoning, so we need to start looking at our zoning and. And that's a good Howard one on the new zoning to make sure that the new one uh. Lightens up some of that.
I'm just thinking, like Las Vegas living across the road.
Yeah, no, no. But they could address that as public signs. Do have certain other situations where residential signs don't, or businesses. You know, any public service messages?
Yep.
Just saying, because.
You gotta remember too, if you have scrolling, somebody's coming down this road or coming down this hill and if they, you're gonna have them come right into the sign.
Yeah, I'm just saying, it it as, that's why those signs are so much money, because you can put pictures on them. You can put little characters on, doing different stuff, for like Halloween on a. The board down at the fire station, we do a Halloween kinda thing, but we make sure it's not one that moves, because we got trouble for that.
See, now you could think of one if it was across the road right here doing that, like Las Vegas you said.
Yeah.
At least whatever happens across the road stays across the road.
Yeah. But yeah.
And it's gotta be so many feet uh on the lawn here, so it's probably gonna be someplace by where the tree is. Right? It's gotta be so mu- so it'll be off the.
Road. And it's gotta be visible from both directions.
So you can take care of that, we're just cutting through even on the top of the grass.
You have to remind, that's our Christmas tree, our holiday tree.
We need the room.
Yeah, alright, yeah, that's a, that's a good capital improvement, I think. Yeah, we should move so, so beautification, are we good with leaving that one away? So page seven.
Seven, the top, we can't do anything.
No, that's what I was gonna say, I was just gonna say, all this page is pretty much set in stone. Cause it's revenues and retirement, everybody agree? Mark my pages off. You seen something?
Yeah.
Appropriation?
We've got franchise. Where's the tipping?
What's that?
Well, because it, I don't think she put that on the franchise fees, does she, the tipping fees from Cessna?
No.
She put that under another one.
Non-property tax.
Yep.
Franchise, I believe, is the charter.
Yep, charter communication, and another thing, guys, too, I I just talked to Zerlo less than a week ago and. I was telling you that the sales tax revenue is higher than what they anticipated, so. I I'm not gonna throw out a figure, although it's not an insurmountable amount, there's quite a, another check coming from the county. Uh what the exact numbers are, they haven't, he kinda threw something out, but he didn't want me to say it on the record, but it's uh, again. It's in the tens of thousands, okay?
So where's that listed down here too? Is that other tax items, ten uh eighty-nine?
Where are you, Henry?
On page seven?
Seven.
Under revenues, is it uh A ten eighty-nine?
Right, cuz we don't get the, we don't get the check until the end of the year, right?
But it, that's.
We didn't get anything, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. But we won't be.
Okay.
But I don't know what that is yet, because the county hasn't finished.
Mortgage taxes down here, A three oh oh five.
Well, they guys had ninety thousand five sixty for this year.
Good.
Uh ten is only at forty, cuz they thought it was gonna, I. I don't want, I hate to go out on a limb, but I think you're gonna get at least the ninety when they get the second check. Okay? Which was a a good gift last year when they did it, because that, it's internet sales. Internet sales get back to your town wherever people are ordering the stuff from. And town plaster used to get it from going to stores down there, but now we get the taxes. Because they're ordering from their homes. And I gave Zerlo his kudos on that too, because the county does not have to give us anything back on sales tax. But they do split it with the towns, so I did thank him for that. And there, that's a continued practice, just double look at doing that. Alright, so let's carry that one eight.
He's just the total.
Yeah, just the total for the previous. Then on nine.
You have any money in for your garage repair?
It'd be a capital improvement, the only capital improvement that we've got legally on the records right now is for the chips money. That's a two hundred thousand. You'll see the capital improvement, it was one ninety-eight, three fifty-six. Thinking it's two hundred thousand, again next year, I, it'll be, I think ours actual was around two hundred. Was it two hundred and three or two hundred and six, I I forget now what you got for the chips.
I thought it was five.
Two hundred and five, and it was somewhere around there, so it was about five thousand dollars more than what we had figured last year. I don't think that's gonna change substantially, only by a couple thousand one way or the other.
There is no reduction in chips money because of the gas tax?
It's gonna be a good question, because there was percentage of the gas tax goes to DOT. To fund DOT, which bridges the roads, everything else. I don't, under present administration, I don't see them cutting back on spending of anything. I think that they're gonna continue on their present course, whether you like it or not, and uh. I don't, I I can't see them cutting that back substantially anyways, but uh we'll we'll end up making it up somewhere, yeah. I don't really see anything on this this whole page that we can change a lot, the snow removal's not gonna change much, uh. Our contract we signed a year ago is still in force for this year, so.
Three years, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, so uh I don't see anything really changing too much on this one.
Where is his thing for his new truck? Well, is it equipment eighty thousand?
That's, yeah, that's what I, that's what I take it as, it's. You know, I mean, well, we gave, we increased it last year by by fifty thousand. So that's your, I believe, your large equipment fund.
I, that's what I believe too, I mean, it's.
So there is a run in total on that. It it continues, it's not just the eighty thousand we're gonna put back in it this year, you know what I'm saying? Your large equipment fund was close to what, two hundred thousand back back a year ago. I know we spent, uh what did you pay for that truck, forty-seven thousand?
Forty-seven?
No, thirty.
Thirty-five, was it thirty?
I thought it was close to forty, maybe a month.
Thirty-eight.
So you're, you're still gonna have quite a bit. You're gonna have uh what we're gonna put in additionally this year. Do you see uh something that's gonna change that drastically?
As far as the machinery, equipment?
Yeah. Cause you're gonna have the remainder of this year's budget plus next year's budget before you you really get a machine, I know you're looking at a new front and order, but.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna have what you need in there to to purchase that thing.
Well, I'm working, I know it's soft, but I'm working out, today I found out another, I'm working another quote.
Yeah, cuz you need three.
Volvo at Albany, substantial. It it's pretty, you know, pretty good, so I wanna check that out also.
Okay.
I mean, they're both source law, but it's um.
That's good.
Did you find, did you find out that was a lease option? For a dollar at the end of the year that we bought the machine?
Then it's the talents, thank you. You know what I mean, it's you don't have, you know, you don't make all the five-year payments and then the dollar one, and you gotta buy it all over again. That's, it it is the talent, it's not like a car dealership or something like that. There was another question too, right?
Your garage floor, where is that?
Yeah, but it was something to do with. The equipment, of course, I didn't think, I thought that was gonna be a work session.
Well, no, I just wanna make sure that we don't, we gave you an, we gave you an extra fifty thousand last year and um. Yeah, it was, because it's budgeted, it it affects the two percent, that's for sure, but if if you. If you're thinking that's where, it's nice to have Mary in the room because she can pull up what's actually in the accounts, you know what I'm saying? But um.
I got a quote from the guy that looked at it last week. Eighteen thousand for the front, eighteen for the back, but he said it's fixed, once she does it, it's fixed.
It's nothing temporary.
Four foot in, four foot out.
My god.
Both ends through the wall.
That's.
Bond, putting in a drop in that drain tile. So we can lower that behind the garage.
Yeah.
So it drains.
No more water flowing in the garage, out in the back parking lot.
About eighteen grand?
Thirty-six total, eighteen front, eighteen back.
Plus the garage.
Thirty-six thousand?
But you have to go out today with a problem, right?
You have to.
Yeah.
But you can use those guidelines. For the bid.
I still have the mother, two bids from a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I still got those two from you.
Yeah.
There's three of them. Keysville.
I think I knew I had one from.
But that wasn't uh replacing uh the drains, yeah, or replacing the drains in the floors. It was just do re-repouring the slabs, which wouldn't get rid of the water issue until we get the drains in. This one you said was getting drains.
He was talking about the back parking lot, which is.
No, 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 I know what he's talking about, but it was just, your quote was talking about fixing the slabs in the front so that door closed all the way.
Yeah, going four feet out into the parking lot, four foot inside, and quarter footers and door, whatever you had to do.
Yeah.
And then uh in the back where it runs into the.
Yeah, running that drain and go where to get that storm water away from.
Yeah, and and lowering that storm drain, because otherwise it's burning uphill. Lower storm drain, lower that parking lot back there, so it all runs off and into that storm drain. And doing that fifty-foot section of blacktop. And and the blacktop on the front.
What kind of a timeframe this year, Mike?
Yeah, pretty good.
Yeah. Mike, where do you uh, where do you have your costs for the uh sand or salt?
Um.
Is that snow removal CE?
I I learned, I'm trying to learn all that too.
Okay.
It's right here, I believe that's um.
Snow removal CE?
You got um, you got the, the accounts, DA fifty-one, forty-two, four hundred.
Okay, fifty-one, forty-two, four hundred, okay.
Yeah, well, it's gotta be a fifty-one, forty-two point four. So it's up nine thousand six hundred bucks from last year.
Yeah, went up eight percent.
And that's what you got there, eight percent, you already ordered it, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's.
It's here.
Yeah.
You've been mixing, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he's, that should be good.
Eight percent for next year's gonna be enough though?
Excuse me?
It went up eight percent this year, is eight percent for next year gonna be enough? It went up eight percent this year, is eight percent for next year gonna be enough?
Um.
Well, I mean, of course, we're all hoping, I mean, I was kinda surprised when, you know, Mr. Lee's had called me there a couple of months ago. Cause he, they worked real, real hard, cause it was like eleven percent.
So you spent eighteen thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars of that.
That can't be correct.
Just going by what it says.
I know, but there's gotta be, that's what I'm wondering is. Cause the year before, we spent ninety-three. Almost ninety-four, yeah.
Yeah, but that was the whole year, this is.
Right, but if he's bought his salt already this year.
Well, maybe she hasn't gotten it in the budget yet.
Okay.
This is the, I think what she said is this is through August, didn't she say that, Kevin?
I didn't get that far away there, cause she got sick.
All her August bills.
So it makes it so hard on this one.
But if you look, if you look at um. Twenty twenty-one, that was ninety-three, twenty twenty-two, we bumped it up to one twenty. And now we're bumping it up another nine. You know what I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
It it's hard to.
See, the little, the note that I got here, I'm learning from her, it's DA fifty-one, forty-two.
Yeah. Yeah.
Four.
Yep. That's where we're at, yeah.
Okay, she's got like the salt, the salt purchase will come out of that.
Yep.
The gas and diesel winter time. She, like I said, it's, I'm learning it, and then that's for the winter. Right. But up here in the general repairs contractual expensive, there's a summer. Looking for for the gas and diesel. Shouldn't that be machine machinery? Cause it's not repairs, machinery.
CE, yeah, that'd be the DA fifty-one thirty point four. The 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 summer one?
The DA fifty-one ten point four.
Okay, that's general repairs.
Yes, and this is where I was kind of, well, I mean. Alright, as long as you're comfortable thinking we're gonna be alright with that amount of increase, cause of the cost of everything. Well, that's up, that's up, that's up ten.
Ten percent.
You know, I mean. I'm talking about snow removal, it's up eight percent CE. It's up ninety-six. Okay.
Well, the rest of it. The rest of it isn't gonna change any, after you get past an oil level. Is everybody good with that page? Okay, ten.
This is pretty much um cut and dry, I mean, it's just guessing how much. Um water you're gonna use, because we're flat rate right now. Uh the only solid numbers we have is.
They increased to the water.
To the water um contract with the town of Plattsburgh, and that's uh the fifty-one thousand nine eighty-three. Went up um.
Three point six, yeah, went up a thousand eight away. But Val was solid with that number, so we're good there. And I don't, I don't see anything we can really change in this page.
Nope.
What it is, they charge us for the operation maintenance and the log is what it is.
Same with the woods and roads is is pretty much.
Yeah.
Uh that the um contract is fifty-one one seventy-nine.
Yeah.
The rest is just a guessing game on how much everybody uses for their water. We don't wanna change things too drastically.
No, they're muted, so we got a pretty good average, and Val's got a good average on that.
Kittyville Claire District, there's the one that was, probably the budget for next year.
Yeah.
Ambulance too.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we got a three-year contract with them, so we already approved that contract, so that's not gonna change.
And we do have, by tomorrow, you'll have the South Plattsburgh in there, because it's on her desk.
Okay. But nothing from Moore civilian?
No, maybe um Kevin can call.
I'll check tomorrow, I might know somebody, I might know somebody.
Nancy Lane Water is the same thing.
Then uh we gotta have us advertise another agenda and another meeting. Cause if Mary can't make it tomorrow, she needs to be here to finalize this thing. She plans on it, but if not, I will get a hold of everybody and we'll put it on the website there, so I'll stand.
When do we uh proceed having it?
Um if we can't do it tomorrow, I don't, I don't see, she's pretty adamant that she will be here tomorrow.
She sounded pretty rough on the phone.
She did, and she was got an antibiotic and she'll be twenty-four hours into it by then. She was gonna be here tonight, but I don't know.
You gonna test if we called her?
Yeah, no, she's got a bad cold.
Cause we got another, after the other night, we got another position we gotta think about for next year.
Yeah. Yeah, um I think there's enough in the budget though, right? Right?
Yeah, but where?
I said I, I think that's why I was so apprehensive of changing what that, that line item was tonight. To make sure there was enough money in there. If I were that, if you know what I'm saying. I'm just making sure we didn't lose anything we could've did tonight. But the rest of it is all special districts, so they're pretty cut and dry. Unless somebody else sees something, um we got. We got that one answered tonight, so we don't have to worry about that one.
I've got notes too, Kevin, I put notes on everything you guys.
Okay, perfect. I see one, so it looks like we're looking on one, two. We're looking at two items, right, for tomorrow? If I'm not mistaken?
Um I don't know what you're.
I said tomorrow, we're looking at two items, go back over.
Oh, is that um town board three percent, supervisor three percent, elections, we've covered that already. Uh safety codes and zoning, superintendent highways, gotta get figures for his.
Yeah.
Um look into other towns for Sam.
Yeah.
The historian and the publicity.
The historian we were good on.
What'd you do for the historian?
We left that. Um I believe we're just gonna, the consensus was just uh. Give her the three percent, but give her the additional um two percent as a increase to the. Job salary, if I'm not mistaken, isn't that how we decided to go? That way everybody's three percent, you say? So that, that should be that. All in all, it's two hundred and something bucks, so it's kinda, kinda. It's not even a fraction of a penny on the.
So it's two percent just for her, her uh position?
I will wanna make sure that Barb doesn't wanna change anything on the assistant and historian, but yeah, that's the way I understand it.
And the senior citizen allocation possibly be increased as well.
We're not keeping everybody here tonight, I will get. You know, it's too. That's it.
So if we don't hear anything, tomorrow night at six o'clock.
Tomorrow night at six o'clock unless you hear different from me.